Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Chelmsford Senior Center for the special town meeting here on February 4th. I'm Kelly Beatty for Chelmsford Telemedia. And I have to tell you, here at the senior center, it is standing room only. And what could bring all these people out on a February evening? Could it be some emergency? Is there an override that needs to be passed? No, it is all about the chickens. I am not kidding. Anyone who's been reading the newspaper recently knows that there is something foul in town, if you will. Feathers are flying, and have been since last fall. Okay, jokes aside, this special town meeting has been called because of changes that have been proposed having to do with domestic animals here in town, and specifically chickens. Now, you think, domestic animals? We must be talking dogs and cats? No. According to the Board of Health, domestic animals is any animal, included but not limited to poultry, bird, reptile, hog, cow, horse, ponies, goats, swine, cattle, sheep, turkeys, ducks, geese, pigeons, rabbits, game birds, donkeys, llamas, alpacas, and mules, but excluding typical household pets which are housed primarily inside a residential dwelling. If you've been paying attention, last fall, there was an issue involving some chickens that were being kept not according to permit in town. And the resulting uproar, if you will, led to a town meeting warrant article that ended up being withdrawn, but it's come back. And the reason we're having this meeting tonight is that the Board of Health issues annual permits for all kinds of animals, and including the right to hold chickens in your yard. So what's going to be debated tonight are four warrant articles, two of which involving foul chickens, if you will, and what the restrictions should be allowing them to be kept. Now, the important thing is that, right now, those requirements involve a zoning bylaw. The zoning bylaw regulates how big the property has to be in order to have chickens. Currently, forty thousand feet has to be your minimum property size in order to have chickens. There's really only about a dozen properties in town that have chickens. The problem has been that people have -- chickens are becoming popular, and a lot of people have started getting chickens in their backyard, not realizing they need a permit. So there've been a number of people who've been sort of breaking the law, if you will. And so what's at issue tonight is whether the requirements and the control, the restrictions ought to be a zoning bylaw, as it is now, which means that the building inspector is responsible for policing that, or turned over to the Board of Health when it can be more easily controlled and modified. So that's what we have. We have two warrant articles tonight. One has been brought forward by the planning committee, by the planning board, to change the minimum lot size from forty thousand to fifteen thousand square feet. Why is that important? There are not that many properties in town with that minimum forty thousand square feet. Literally, about eighty percent of the townspeople who own property could not have chickens in their backyard if they wanted to, because their lots aren't that big. So by reducing the property size, more families could have chickens. But of course, that puts those chickens in closer proximity to their neighbors, and there's the rub. A lot of people do not want chickens in the yards next to them. They think that there's something, you know, ugly, and nasty, and infectious about them. In fact, the issue last fall involved rats, an infestation of rats, really foul smells. We even have a handout tonight, seven false myths about urban chickens. So what promises to be an interesting debate over that planning board warrant article is countered by a citizen petition to actually keep the zoning bylaw and to strengthen it by establishing large setbacks from adjacent properties. So we're going to see whether this ends up being in the hands of the Board of Health or remaining as a zoning bylaw. And I wasn't kidding about there being standing room only here tonight. We're going to see a lot of this play out. There is going to be more than one presentation. If you've been following the Board of Selectmen, it's been very hotly contested at Board of Selectmen's meetings, at the Board of Health meetings. The owners of the property that were called into question last fall have even levied notions that it's all sort of racially driven, because the family is Pakistani. So what we're going to see tonight is a play out of man against beast, if you will. And I hope you stay with us. We'll begin just shortly, as town moderator John Curlin draws this meeting to begin with. Now, it should be said that although the -- this special meeting was brought about by the chickens and the need to register, there'll be two others having to do with non-chicken issues. Here we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this moment, I would ask that we all take a moment of silence to honor Fran McDougall, a longtime town meeting rep who passed away a couple of weeks ago. The location of the fire exits are on both sides of the room and at the rear. I'd also been asked to remind town meeting reps that if you have not turned in your incumbent letters, please do so by five o'clock tomorrow, even if you are not signing up for another tour of duty. Are we all set? We have a slight technical difficulty with the clickers, so we're working on that. I have reviewed the return of service on the warrant, and for the record, will state that the warrant has been duly served properly. So in that regard, we're legal. And as soon as I get the heads up from the powers that be, we will test the voting devices, and I will declare a quorum.
While we're waiting, I just want to mention that the two other warrant articles not having to do with the Board of Health and the zoning bylaw on animals have to do with the collective bargaining agreement with the Chelmsford police officers, and also an easement that needs to be obtained along Tobin Avenue. Those are being taken up now, although they were not the reason for calling this town meeting, special town meeting, in the first place. That was definitely the issues with the Board of Health and the domesticated animal.
While we're waiting, I might as well do my little initiation speech here, because we do have a lot of individuals who normally don't attend town meeting. So I would like to welcome all town meeting reps to tonight's meeting, as well as the many Chelmsford residents who have joined us here tonight. Before I present town meeting protocol, I want to explain a departure from our usual rules. Article one and two are mutually exclusive. While representatives could vote against both articles, which would maintain the current status quo, they cannot vote in favor of both. Therefore, in the spirit of fairness, we shall initially hear the presentation for both articles consecutively. I will then inquire of the finance committee, Board of Selectmen, and the planning board whether they support each article. Then there will be the opportunity to ask questions of either or both presenters and engage in discussion. This way, both sides get an equal opportunity to make their respective cases before there are any votes. I anticipate that there will be a great deal of discussion on these articles, so I will strictly adhere to the time limits, which I will mention shortly. Any resident of Chelmsford can ask questions from the microphone and engage in discussion, but only town meeting representatives can vote. Here are the rules with respect to protocol and procedure. All questions and debate shall emanate from the microphone facing the moderator in the center of the hall and shall go through the moderator. Board or committee members, other town officials, or department heads may use other microphones to answer questions or provide information to the meeting. Speakers shall refrain from asking rhetorical or argumentative questions and shall only ask questions seeking needed information. The questions should be in the "who," "what," "when," "where," and "why" mode. Kindly avoid argumentative questions that start or end with "isn't it true?" or "wouldn't you admit?" I would prefer not to have to rule questions out of order, but I am bound by the laws and regulations that define our conduct, and I will do my best to enforce them fairly and respectfully. I will allow a reasonable amount of time for follow-up questions, but I will have to intervene if any individual is taking and is asking an excessive number of follow-up questions. All presenters of articles shall be limited to ten minutes, and I shall notify each when they have one minute remaining. This will be strictly enforced. With respect to discussions, speakers are encouraged to be brief, and each speaker will be limited to five minutes of debate. You should be able to make your points within five minutes. This time limit will be strictly enforced. Speakers should ask their questions prior to engaging in discussion. Making inquiries will not be considered part of the five-minute discussion limit unless you have started discussion and then asked questions. Once the clock starts, it will not stop until the speaker does or time expires. I would appreciate being advised that a speaker is beginning debate. We do have some other rules of protocol. Please do not refer to any prior speaker by name. The proper designation is to call him or her "the previous speaker." Please refrain from personal attacks. Challenging or arguing in opposition to another's position is fair game, and that's what this meeting is all about. Intentional slander against any individual or group cannot be tolerated. Let us refrain from repeating arguments that have already been made, but new ideas or distinctions are welcome and encouraged. Discussion of pending litigation will not be permitted unless specifically included in the warrant article being debated. If, during the course of discussion, I observe several speakers on one side of an issue but none in opposition, I will interrupt debate to inquire if there are any who wish to express an opposing position or offer an amendment. If there are none, I shall end debate and move the question. If there is opposition, I will move that party to the front of the line and allow debate to continue. I trust that you will all appreciate how this will advance our mutual goal of moving town meeting along. To those who may be next in line, should I ever have to exercise this process, you have my apologies in advance. There will not be any debating from the presenter's podium. They may answer questions, but should they want to engage in debate, presenters would have to queue up in the line like everyone else. Again, due to the unusual circumstances of these first two articles, a person should not speak a second time, only be given this opportunity, and shall only be given this opportunity to correct or dispute a statement of fact made by a previous speaker. This privilege will be narrowly construed by the moderator. As has been our practice, we have two screens, so that all reps may read the articles and any amendments upon which they will be voting. They can also view the slides on the screen of your iPads, laptops, computers, or other smart devices. Simply log in using the instructions on the screen, if they're up there. And if they're not, I can tell you what they are. Speaking of amendments, all amendments will be submitted on the forms which you can get from either the town clerk or me. If you know prior to town meeting that you intend to file an amendment, you can see me or Patricia Zeris prior to the meeting for the form, or you can email them to me, and I will make the necessary copies and distribute them to Town Council and the typist, so that these will be ready before town meeting begins. If you get to it, to either of us prior to the introduction of that article, Town Council will have an opportunity to review the amendment, which will expedite the meeting. The form is -- will create an original in three copies. The white top copy comes to me. The yellow copy goes to the amendment assistant, which is down there. The pink copy to town clerk, and an orange copy you retain for your own records. I want to thank Chelmsford Telemedia for their assistance in setting up the screens, streaming, and timer, and broadcasting this meeting. Out of regard for the presenters and your fellow time meeting representatives, I respectfully request that there be no conversations at your tables. If I can hear background discussions up here, it means that there may be reps or residents who cannot hear the presentation, questions, and answers or discussion. Thank you. Ted, are we all set? We are. Okay, so let's -- everybody test your voting devices, so that I may declare officially for the record that we have a quorum.
And so as they test those devices, town meeting reps, just to bring it to speed, we have nine voting precincts and eighteen town meeting reps in each one representative of town meeting, and that, I think the math in my head, is a hundred and sixty-eight total. A couple of months ago, we -- I witnessed a town meeting like this in Sudbury where they don't have --
Okay, there we go. So please --
They have open town meeting. It was a contentious RDB proposal, and twenty-five-hundred people showed up, all of them entitled to a vote. We don't have that quiet level of chaos here, but it's going to promise to be an interesting night. The thing I would keep an eye out for is lots and lots of amendments offered to these two, first two warrant articles.
What we're going to do now is -- Why don't we actually start with the articles? And then we'll do the quorum, because I can just visually see that we have a quorum. But in order to make it official, we'll have an official count. So again, we're going to do the presenter for Article one, followed by the presenter for Article two. Mr. Manager?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, town meeting representatives and those others in attendance in the room and at home. My name is Paul Cohen. I'm the town manager here in the town of Chelmsford. I just want to provide some introductory remarks in terms of the articles that are before you this evening. The genesis of this occurred last summer during a permitting process for chickens in the community, which falls under our small animal accessory to dwellings bylaw, under the zoning bylaws of the community. It became apparent at that time that permits had been issued by the Board of Health, which is a regulatory authority under state law for the health code, for chickens that were in violation, in some instances, of the forty-thousand-square-foot lot size requirement of the town's zoning bylaw. We then spent some time, you know, trying to decipher how many people this affected. And during that time, we also discovered that there were numerous property owners in the community that had chickens on their dwelling but did not have any permit from the Board of Health. And then obviously, there's a third category of those who had the appropriate permit and the appropriate lot size. So where it went from there is, is late in the calendar year 2018, the Board of Health began a process of revising its small animal slash chicken regulations, and that process continued into the start of this calendar year. And now, there are adopted and in place new health regulations pertaining to the housing of small animals, rabbits, and chickens, and so forth. So we -- the Board of Health then had the dilemma of how a permit's going to be issued for calendar year nineteen when we have this issue of conflict. And so that brings us to the choice this evening, where we are seeking a determination. And why we called the special town meeting is, the Board of Health has held in abeyance the 2019 applications until this meeting can provide a clear direction to the community. And so that's why we didn't wait until the April town meeting. And so what you have before you are a situation where there are three choices before the town meeting this evening. The first one is to do nothing, leave the existing zoning bylaw in place, which would be the language that's on the screen that's stricken out. The second article is the proposed Article one, the second option, which is the underlying language that would, in essence, remove the small animal from the zoning bylaws and therefore just leave the animals accessing dwelling to the large animals such as cattle, horses, and so forth. And then the third option will be proposed by the petition article, Robert Myers, under Article two, which would amend the zoning bylaw but then provide different setbacks. So that's the choice this evening that's before you for consideration. What I'm now going to do is turn the podium over to the planning board chair, Mike Raesbeck, who will present the planning board's presentation pertaining to this article.
This will be very short and very sweet, because Paul has actually given a very good description of what is going on here. As you have all heard, the Board of Health recently did enact extensive regulations concerning animals, large and small. This is Sections 20131 through 20154 of the Board of Health regulations. It's eleven pages in all. It's quite extensive. These cover all manner of things, including setbacks, location and maintenance of animals, waste, storage of food, and a number of other things. Article one removes the last bit of small animal lot size and setback regulation from the zoning bylaw, which was really the only piece of small animal regulation that was left with the zoning. And zoning's a really a fairly blunt tool. But in particular, I want to point out that the Board of Health's regulations contain a section on grandfathering of pre-existing permits. Paul made reference to that, Section 20151, that cannot be implemented for some prior small animal permit holders unless the zoning bylaws are changed. And this is why we've presented Article one tonight.
So again, what Article one would do is it would basically, you now have the small animals regulated by two elected boards in town. The planning board, which acts and recommends on the zoning bylaw, which is enforced by the building commissioner, and the Board of Health, which has health inspectors that enforce the health regulations. And when Town Council and I, you know, designed the assessment of the situation and recommended to the Board of Selectmen to call this special town meeting, we basically felt that perhaps it'd be better, the community could be best served by having it streamlined to one elected board, and that was through the research that Town Council Paul Haverty had in terms of how other communities handled the zoning and/or regulations of small animals. So that's sort of the synopsis of this article. I'm now going to turn the podium over to Robert Myers, who is the petitioner for Article two. He has a PowerPoint presentation that he'll walk you through, and then, as the moderator indicated, we'll then open up the questions on both of these article subject matter. So Bob, if you want to come up to the podium, and you can make your presentation at this time.
Ed Buckley and myself. I'm Bob Myers. We've put together a citizens petition, warrant Article two. The reason we put together this petition was to address, unfortunately, a rat infestation that happened in town. We did not feel that putting the responsibility for small animals on the back of the Board of Health, we don't think that worked out correctly. There were homes that had too many chickens on too small a lot without any setbacks from water, and the Board of Health was not able to enforce that. Only town zoning can change a distance, and only the building department should be responsible for measuring setbacks, property lines, and structures. I think trying to force that onto the Board of Health did not work last year, and it certainly won't work this year. So having said that, I'll get on to my presentation. Oops. Pardon me. Fantastic. Thank you, Paul. You're experienced at this. So why are we here? Well, after about fifty years, I've been living here over fifty years. Some of my neighbors have as well. We've been experiencing some rat infestation along two streets that border Golden Cove Stream. It's a large brook. It runs all year. We had rats on our property. They were eating gardens. We even had car wire chewing damage and the cost of exterminators. We had the perfect conditions for rat infestation. We had an increased number of chicken owners. Keeping chickens, which I'm not opposed to, is becoming more popular. There are not a lot of firm regulations in place, and I think there need to be. The dumping of chicken and animal waste into Golden Cove Brook, what some people call composting of chicken manure, I call dumping in the wetlands, because that's what happens. One hen produces one-hundred-and-thirty pounds of fecal matter a year. And if you have a group of five, ten, or twenty chickens, as will be allowed by the Board of Health, you're going to have almost a ton of waste produced. And where does it go? It's not going into your trash cans. People don't have room for that. We're limited to two. Bedding, old feed, droppings, all get dumped onto someone's property. Also, chickens require that food be laid out for them and kept in a container in the coop. They peck at it all day long. They can't go without food. They don't eat one large meal like you and I. Rats and mice, unfortunately, have the ability to squeeze through small openings. They get in, and they eat the feed. They live off of it. We need setbacks that separates chicken coops from wetland areas. There were environmental concerns. In a wet year, you're always going to have rats that naturally occur along waterways. We just have to be intelligent enough to come up with a setback that prevents a rat Again, we had permitted chicken owners who exceeded their number of chickens and small animals. We had some people who just kept chickens and didn't even bother getting a permit. Between myself and a group of neighbors, we trapped one-hundred-and-thirty-five rats. Not a figure that I'm proud of, but it had to be done. Here's an example of some dumping along Golden Cove Brook. It's a mix of bedding, hay, chicken feed, and rabbit droppings. These things are edible by rats, and we're eaten by the rats. This is an overview of my proposal of warrant Article two. I believe everyone got a copy of it that I sent out an email, I believe, last Friday. So I won't go into too much detail, but what I'm doing is, rather than putting everything onto the Board of Health, I'm keeping setbacks and anything that needs to be measured is going to be kept with the building department where it belongs. I put together a comparison between Article one and Article two. These are what will happen if each article were to pass. Article one and Article two, you can see that the first five conditions don't change anything. Larger animals, people who keep larger animals, there's no changes in place. I'm also proposing to eliminate the forty-thousand-square-foot requirement. I don't think that's required. I don't think you need almost an acre to keep small animals. Again, I'm not trying to prevent people from keeping small animals, only that we have reasonable regulations and reasonable setbacks. The only difference you'll see is when you get to number six, the effect of Article one would lower the current fifty-foot setback to twenty-five feet. I don't know if anyone wants a chicken coop twenty-five feet from their property. I think twenty-five feet is probably from me to maybe the end of the Board of Selectmen where Pat Wojcicki is sitting. That's maybe twenty-five or thirty feet. That's awfully close, and I don't know if people would want it that close. I'm proposing to raise the fifty-foot setback to seventy-five feet. Article one would establish a fifty-foot setback from surface water. Article two would make it a hundred-and-fifty feet. Again, fifty feet is maybe from here, not even to the end of this building room. I think a hundred-and-fifty feet will do a lot more to discourage a rat population. Article two would also not allow for non-conforming lots if someone is too close to water, or has too many chickens, or has a structure that's too close to their neighbor's property. What good is it to grandfather it in? I think we need to enforce regulations that work for everyone and apply to everyone. I think we need to enforce regulations that work for everyone and apply to everyone. And most importantly, it will keep measuring and setbacks under the, under the responsibility of the Building Department where it belongs. The Board of Health is not equipped to measure these setbacks, and as we've seen last year, they did not. Again, Board of Health setbacks can also be changed at any time. They will, they provide public the opportunity to provide input, but they make the decision unilaterally. What I propose, when you keep it with the zoning, then only you members of the town meeting can change setbacks and zoning. And I think this is where the responsibility should lie with all of you. It's worth noting that the Board of Health and Finance Committee voted against both of these warrant articles. I think there's some confusion as to what the right thing to do is among those boards. But I think, in my mind, it's clear that zoning setbacks that protect us should remain with the Building Department. We plan to spend $508,000 for stormwater runoff in fiscal year 2019. That will increase to $887,000 in fiscal year 20. If the town engineer is here, we could probably ask what those figures are going to be. It, it seems like they're just going to increase every year. We need to have setbacks from water for these small animal structures. Otherwise, all our efforts to clean up the stormwater are wasted efforts and wasted money. You probably noticed the $40 you got on your water bill. That's going to stay, and that's where it's going. Let's help them out by providing proper setbacks. We lived the nightmare, and we hope nobody else has to. So please support me with warrant Article Two. Thank you very much.
Ed Buckley, 27 Buckman Drive. I promised I wouldn't talk about rats tonight. We went through enough of that last summer. But I'd like to talk about responsible setbacks, reasonable setbacks. As a community, I think we're owed that. Article One guts everything. No setbacks. They took the 40,000 square feet and they gutted it. I think that's reckless and irresponsible. Some of us around the communities, Lowell, Belrecce, Lexington, Arlington, 100 feet.
You have one minute.
Year-round water bodies, surface water bodies. Sudbury, 200 feet. I just think the right decision would be, I have nothing against small barnyard animals, nothing at all. I think the right decision would be to abide by, you know, the water setbacks that we're putting forward. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation on, on Article One?
Do you want to do them separately?
Yeah, we'll do each one separately.
Okay. A majority of the Finance Committee recommends against approval of Article One.
Does the Board of Selectmen have a recommendation with respect to Article One?
The Board of Selectmen approve Article One, four to one.
And does the Planning Board have a recommendation regarding Article One?
Yes, the Planning Board recommended unanimously Article One.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation with respect to Article Two?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends against approval of Article Two.
Does the Board of Selectmen have a recommendation with respect to Article Two?
The Board of Selectmen were three against Article One, one abstention, and one for. Article Two, excuse me.
Okay, let's make sure we everybody understands. We're talking about Article Two now?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion against Article Two. Three for, one abstention, and one against.
And does the Planning Board have a recommendation with respect to Article Two?
Yes, the Planning Board recommends against Article Two. Four against, two abstain. It was a short board that night.
Thank you. We will now commence the questions and, and, oh, before we get to that, we do have a friendly amendment. Mr. Myers has submitted a friendly amendment. And we also have a, an amendment to Article One that is not a friendly amendment, so we'll deal with the friendly amendment to Article Two, which, I don't know if that's, do we have that on the screen?
Mr. Moderator, are we allowed to ask questions on the main article before we amend it?
Well, well, since it's a friendly amendment, we normally do these beforehand because you don't want to argue an article that is being amended on a friendly basis. So, so just very quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to take this opportunity to discuss a friendly amendment. It is always my intention to work with the input that I'm receiving from the town meeting reps to come up with something that's reasonable. Allow me to back up. I've gotten feedback that the 75 feet was maybe a little too large, but the 25 feet that the Board of Health is proposing, people didn't like that either. So I'm proposing that we keep the setback to 50 feet, as it already exists with no In addition, the setback from water, people were saying that, oh, 50 feet is a little close, but 150 was a little bit too restrictive. I filed an amendment to back, back off the setback from water down to 100 feet. I think this will suit everyone's desires. It, it won't be too restrictive. Smaller lots in town, or lots that are bordering water, will likely not be allowed to keep chickens, but most houses in town will because they will not be hampered by the 40,000 square feet anymore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, you may want to stay there because I do have a question.
Okay, well, we're, we're also going to do, we're going to address the amendment to Article One as well, so that we're just, so that...
I just didn't want him to walk back there and then walk...
No, 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 that's, thank you, Mr. Thorin. So, Mr. Lear, do you want to explain your proposed amendment to Article One?
Do you want me to withdraw it, Bob? Or proceed?
I think you, you could probably withdraw the amendment to Article One, and we'll just go with Article Two at this point.
Okay, well, that makes it easy.
Thank you, Mr. Lear.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, so, Mr. Thorin, you're first in the queue, so identify yourself and...
Glenn Thorin, Precinct Five. I, I just need a little help with the geometry here. I try to think of things in a simple way. So if we have a square lot to begin with, and a typical lot is 40,000 square feet, let's say, so, so we have a square lot that's 200 feet on a side, okay? And I was originally going to ask this with the 75 feet, but now we're down to 50 feet. On a, on a square lot that's 200 feet on a side, you're essentially taking away 50 feet from this side, 50 feet from this side, 50 feet from this side, 50 feet from this side. So you now have an active area that if I did the math right, is 100 by 100.
I think 50-foot setbacks being, is the current standard, and I believe it would amount to someone having a yard size of maybe a half acre or a little less.
So a half acre would be 20,000 square feet. Do you have a picture that shows us a typical lot, square lot would be fine, and the area that's carved out from that area by these setbacks that shows where the remaining area is that you could put chicken coops in or store waste in? And then, as people look at that square lot, they could say, now, where would I put a house on a square lot? I've got to have house setbacks as well, so that you have setbacks from the perimeter of the lot for houses. So a house is going to be put in the middle of that area that you've already reserved for chicken coops. And I think if you do something like that, you'll find that the chicken coop has to be attached to the house, or something like that, in order for it to have any space at all. So when I, when you had the 75 square feet, you had a little tiny square in the middle of a square lot where the chicken coop would go, and that would be where a house would go. Do you have pictures like that? Because that would help us a lot.
I didn't provide pictures because, as I said before, 50 feet is the existing standard that currently exists in our zoning. But I agree with you on the 75 feet. I got feedback from other town meeting representatives, and that's why I proposed to lower it to 50.
Yeah, because it would only be 2,500 square feet left where you could locate a chicken coop, and that would be a little tiny square in the middle of a 40,000 square foot lot. Now it's a little bigger than that. Is that correct?
Yes, the idea was to prevent people from putting a chicken coop too close to somebody else's property. Chicken coops, people have different opinions on their appearance. Some people find them very ugly and smelly. Some people find them not so bad. So a setback of 50 feet is the existing standard, and I think people would like to maintain that. Thank you, Mr. Thorin.
Will Wagner, Precinct Eight. Mr. Moderator, through you to the presenter on Article Two. Just a few questions on your presentation, specifically where you had your comparisons. You said that the Article One lowering, lowered the current 50-foot setback to 25 feet, and yet the article as presented in our document is 50.
Let me explain. Article One, if passed, will put the responsibility on the Board of Health. It is the Board of Health's setback that is 25 feet.
But...
So the effect of Article One would be to make the setback 25 feet according to the Board of Health regulation? I hope that makes sense.
Basically, what, what Mr. Thorin said regarding the square footage is concerning because of the size of the lot required to have the chickens.
Is this a question, Mr. Wagner?
It's a lead-up to a question. Most of the, you, you can start the clock. Most of the house lots in town that are modern houses probably meet that requirement, but many of the older ones don't. My parents have a house over 100 years old, and I know that it would not meet the current requirements, or the requirements as suggested by you, not only through the, the setback, but possibly for the wetlands. Yet, we had, we had chickens for, for over a decade with no problem from the neighbors, from the wetlands, or anything else. So I think part of the problem that you're seeing here is a problem with people's use of their chickens that should be addressed through, addressed through implementation of the law, not changing the law to make everything more restrictive. Because you have people who are breaking the bylaw as it stands, and you're saying, well, they broke the bylaw, so let's make it worse. Allow more homes to keep small animals. Unfortunately, I don't believe that that is correct.
I can explain that for you.
No, 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 there's no question before you. You can only respond to questions.
Okay.
This is a question, however. What evidence do you have to support your contention earlier in your presentation that chickens are inherent in the, the rat troubles? As I saw from the earlier presentation from, at the Board of Health, I believe that the investigation indicated that the problem was exacerbated by trash on the property, not the chickens. Could you address that?
The Board of Health did not tell me that. The Board of Health was not talking about trash. They were talking about unpermitted chickens on Buckman Drive, if you recall. There was, there was a house on Buckman Drive that had a large number of unpermitted chickens. I don't know what the condition of the property is about trash. I just know that the Board of Health did have to take certain action against that property. Perhaps someone from the Board of Health could answer your question as to what specific actions they took.
Okay, do you have any specific evidence to support your contention that increased number of chickens increases the, the possibility of rats? That the rats in the area were brought by the chickens, other than your belief that is so?
With my discussions between the Planning Board and Board of Health, we all acknowledge that rats are naturally occurring in waterways. We're not talking about wetlands. We're talking about surface water. So, you know, if something's wet one week out of the year, I'm not proposing we, we go 150 feet from that. So this is, in, in surface water, ponds, or streams, rats are naturally occurring. When you put a chicken coop in close proximity, you provide feed, bedding, waste. They feed off that, and their numbers increase.
So it sounds more like we need a specific restriction on the disposal of waste and the storage of food than the placement of the, the location.
Unfortunately, I'm sorry. I can answer your question. No, no, no.
That wasn't actually a question. That was a statement.
Well, it sounded like a question.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, through you to the Board of Health. We did not have a poll from the Board of Health on their opinion of these articles.
Well, I'm not sure that, well, first of all, they're, they're not one of the presenters. This is a zoning article. This isn't a Board of Health issue. I, I know it is from your perspective. If anyone is here from the Board of Health and wants to clarify any of the comments, they certainly are welcome to do so.
The reason, the reason I ask is because Article Two's presentation included a statement that the Board of Health voted against this, and also the Board of Health is going to be sustaining the, the bylaw going forward. So I think we need their input. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Chris LaValle, Precinct Four. Mr. Moderator, through you to the presenters. In drafting your article, did you have a chance to work with the Planning Board or the Board of Health in drafting any of the setbacks or anything like that?
The Planning Board was drafting a competing article, Article One, so they were not interested.
So they were not consulted in your draft?
No. They, they feel that it is best to keep this with the Board of Health. I feel it is best to keep setbacks with the Building Department. So we were kind of at odds with each other.
And Mr. Moderator, through you to the Planning Board. Did the Planning Board consult in drafting their article with either these gentlemen or the, the Board of Health?
Well, Mr. Raisbeck is on his way to the microphone.
Okay, as to consulting with these gentlemen, they, they appeared at our public hearing on it. As to the Board of Health, I attended a number of the Board of Health meetings, but beyond the fact that they had already passed a very substantial set of regulations, which they seemed to feel was adequate, we didn't discuss it with them further.
Okay, thank you.
You can start my time if you'd like. While I do agree with some of the, the statements that you made in here, the Board of Health setbacks can be changed at any time with minimal public input, whereas the zoning changes need to be coming here first, I think that is critical and important. And I do agree that something needs to happen with these restrictions and laws and setbacks, but I find it a massive shame that none of the three groups got together to draft any of this. And it seems like things are getting more confusing rather than less confusing, and it might have solved something a little bit quicker had the three groups come together and tried to draft a single article and try and divide up the responsibilities between the two boards as opposed to just handing it off to each other. So I would, I'm going to vote no on both of these and ask that the three groups get back together again, come up with something that we can all agree on and, and vote on in spring town meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
You can start the clock. George Zohrals, Precinct Three. I feel for the neighbors in Bob's neighborhood for the issues that they had. I don't own chickens. I don't intend to own chickens. I think this Article One is a good change, and I believe that the Board of, leave it with the Board of Health in their regulations, as they are the special granting, permit granting authority. They have a set of rules and regulations, and then they can hand them off to the person that's applying for the permit. And if they find that their rules and regulations are not working, they can change their rules and regulations, and as the permits come up, they can present the new regulations. Also, if there is a violation of the regulations, they can pull their permit from the, the people that have the, the chickens. So if they find this a violation of, of their rules, I really think we leave it with the Board of Health. And if, if there's an issue with setbacks, I'm sure the Board of Health can walk down the hall and talk to the Building Department and get help from them. We're all, they're all one. They're all in one building, so I'm sure that they can help each other out. I'm voting yes on one, no on two.
Thank you.
Glenn Diggs, Precinct Two, also a member of the Board of Selectmen. I have a question, probably best asked to Paul, although it will involve others as well. I, I may be wrong, but I think when the moderator began, he said you could not vote on both of these affirmatively?
Actually, what, yes, that's what I said.
Why?
Because they're in conflict with each other.
They're not.
I think, I think Town Council...
I think Town Council could probably explain what would happen if both articles were to pass.
So, that question has come up previously. The issue is, to the extent that Article 1 passes, there is no bylaw left to amend. So, the question then is, can Article 2 actually be passed, amending a bylaw that has been repealed, or the portion of the bylaw that's been repealed? And if there's any conflict between those two, does that raise an issue of essentially a repetitive petition after the first one has been approved? So, I think that the best approach here tonight, and which is why the moderator is taking both of these articles at the same time and giving everybody the opportunity, you know, to hear all discussion and make a decision as to which or neither of the articles they support. And that's the reason for going forward in that way, because it does create a potential conflict. If Article 1 passes, then Article 2 really can't move forward and amend an article that doesn't exist anymore.
All right, but the dial... You're talking about a technical part of the dialogue, but let me digress a minute. First of all, the rules that the Planning Board...
Are you engaging in debate now, or are you asking questions?
I will be asking questions.
Okay, well, let's hear the questions.
Let me ask Paul first. The Planning Board came up... Excuse me. The Board of Health came up with a new set of regulations. And am I correct that the way that that... Part of the process of that was that you were involved early in the discourse about when this came up as an issue? And that you asked Town Council to look out into other towns in terms of what their regulations may be, so that Chumsford could adopt something that might be successful in other communities? Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, so the Planning Board did... Excuse me. The Board of Health did not just arbitrarily come up with these rules. They did it based on an evaluation of other towns and what was successful in those towns. So, it wasn't just by the seat of their pants, correct? They had some way of trying to come up with a legitimate way of doing this. The Board of... The Planning Board, in their own desire to do the right thing, has decided that perhaps they don't have the expertise to decide that it should be 40,000 square feet, 30,000 square feet, 20,000 square feet, or whatever square feet. That really... You know, if you have them saying 40,000 square feet, and you wanted to have chickens, you've got to go to two places to have relief.
Now, are you asking a question, or are you arguing here? Because it sounds...
Now, I'm asking the town manager if that's a correct interpretation. That a person would have to go to two different places to get satisfaction in terms of enlightenment, in terms of are they doing the right thing?
That's correct. If one were to seek to house rabbits, chickens, small animals, they call my office, come in the town hall. We're going to send them to the Board of Health office to obtain a permit. What the Board of Health is going to do, and Sue Rosa's, the health director's in the room this evening. She can assist me if I'm speaking. But what they will do is, they will basically say, "Here's your application. Oh, by the way, you need to bring us documentation from the Building Department and from the... If there's a wetlands setback issue, also from the Conservation Agent, that, you know, that you comply with the setbacks of the Board of Health regulations." But they would be the permitting authority, but they would still reach out to or send the applicant to the Building Department and Community Development Office, where the Conservation is, to get the information regarding the setbacks for structures, lot line, and so forth. So, yes, the... It starts with the Board of Health and ultimately ends with the Board of Health if the process were to take place.
But it goes through the intermediary, which is the Planning Board.
The problem becomes of enforcement. And this, that if there's a violation, and you've got a violation of the zoning bylaw, that's enforced by the Building Commissioner. If you've got a violation of the Board of Health regulations, that's enforced by the Board of Health Director. And so, that becomes the issue of the concurrent and hopefully not conflicting jurisdiction.
And am I correct in that at the last town meeting, it was brought forth that the Board of Health did not have the capacity to deal with doing all the inspections that they needed to do? And that the town meeting approved a second inspector, so they could do their job properly? Was that correct?
That's correct. If you recall at the fall town meeting, we discussed the fact that the Board of Health was not able to conduct all the necessary restaurant inspections. I've been insured, and when we discussed that matter with the second full-time inspector, with the Board of Health Director, that they would have adequate resources with the two full-time inspectors that are now employed by the town to address the other health obligations, including this, if they were the sole jurisdictional body for the small animal regulations.
So, am I correct in that it appears that the Board of Health now has the capacity to properly evaluate these permits, when in the past, these permits were given out and there was no follow-up? Because there just probably wasn't enough manpower to do it? I'm asking questions, Mr. Moderator.
No, no, yeah, but you're going a little far, because now you're going back what the problems were in the past, and we're trying to go forward in the future. The question you asked was answered that there are two inspectors who can do this going forward. And that's what this town meeting is going to decide.
Well, what this town meeting is really deciding is whether or not the town meeting members know enough about chickens to decide that 40,000 square feet is enough or not. Because Article 2...
Now, are you engaged in discussion? Because that doesn't sound like a question to me.
All right, I'll ask it as a question.
Well, no, no, no. Now, how can you ask... Mr. Dix, how can you ask a question of any of these members as to what the 162 members of town meeting know or don't know?
I don't.
Well, then, don't ask that question.
All right, I'll say, "I don't know," and I'm asking the vote on it.
But now you're engaging in debate.
All right. Let me talk about Article 2, then. Article 2, if it passes, is a zoning restriction.
Now, is this debate?
Yes. I'd like to talk to the town manager again.
Well, you're on the clock.
Well, there's two articles...
You just said you were on debate, so you've got five minutes.
Well, if I have two articles, shouldn't I have twice as much time?
No, you don't. The rules are the rules. Go for it.
Article 2, if Article 2 passes, is that fault of the zoning department? The enforcement of that?
The enforcement would remain with the Building Commissioner, who's the zoning enforcement agent for the Town of Chelmsford.
Right, so if I were to vote to go forward with Article 1, taking the Planning Board out of it, but I voted for Article 2, I put the Planning Board right back in the process again? Article 1 takes Planning Board out of it, Article 2 puts Planning Board back in it?
That's correct, and that's why Council explained, you can't have both articles passing. It has to be one or the other.
So, the people who are sponsoring Article 2, if they wrote it somewhat differently, it would be unacceptable. It would be acceptable. They're trying to amend something that you're killing. If they wrote it differently, it would serve as a proper warrant article. And you could vote on both of them. You could vote yes on 1, and you could vote yes on 2, because yes on 2 seems to just say that the Board of Health's rules are too lenient and that we want it a little bit larger. And that's all they're saying. And I am finished, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dix.
Yes. Robert Walton, Precinct 9. Question through you, Mr. Moderator, to the Finance Committee. What particular expertise does the Finance Committee bring to eggs, mice, rats, chickens, et cetera? That they produce a nice pamphlet? And I know that the Finance Committee is deathly against question 2. Where's the expertise, can I ask?
And they will answer.
Do they have any?
Well, they will answer. I'll leave it up to the chairman.
Thanks, John. The Finance Committee has taken a position over the past few years that any article that's going to have a financial impact to the town, we will provide our recommendation on after reviewing all the facts, information that's been provided to us either by the president of the article or by Town Council, or by the town manager, or by the Planning Board, or whatever board's bringing it before us. There are financial implications to both of these articles, either with fines or with setbacks, applications, how this process goes forward, and therefore, we have provided our recommendation for them.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Moderator. As one of the 162 town meeting members who aren't getting paid, I'm greatly insulted that the Health Department and the Building Department, who will be receiving all the calls, all the complaints, et cetera, about these issues, are missing in action.
Well, again...
Why aren't they here?
Again...
Can they take a stand on this? We've heard from the Finance, from the Plan...
You've asked me a question, let me answer it. We do have Sue Rosa from the Board of Health who's here. We have someone from the Building Department here. If you have a specific question...
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, the Building Commissioner is here this evening. The Town Engineer is here in attendance this evening. I'm here in attendance this evening as well, as is our Community Development Director, Planner. But as the administrative officers of the town, it's not our job to set policy. So, I'm not offering my opinion, and I'm requesting that the Building Commissioner not offer his opinion, and that the Town Engineer not offer her opinion, because this is a policy matter, not an administrative matter. So, our opinion on it really isn't relevant. Your job is to set the legislation, the policy. Our job is to carry it out. So, they here to answer any technical questions you have, but I really am not interested in hearing the Building Commissioner's opinion on chickens, because it's really not relevant. One, he's not a town resident, and two is, that's not his job. His job is to enforce the code. His job is not to set policy for this community.
Mr. Walton, now you understand why there was a citizen position required?
Yeah, Mr. Latina.
Point of order. Mr. Moderator, I understood that our town manager actually penned the warrant Article 1.
Mr. Latina, he is the chief administrator. Most of the warrant articles that appear before us, unless they're from the School Department or the Planning Board, emanate through what he has been advised are issues that should be coming before town meeting.
I understand, but the statement to town meeting was that he and the administrative office don't set policy.
And he's not. All he's doing is he's putting an issue before this body for you guys to set the policy.
Mr. Moderator, this article is sponsored by the Planning Board, Article 1, not the town manager.
Oh, this one is.
That's correct. Article 1 is not the town manager's article, it is the Planning Board's article. I was asked, and it was brought before the Planning Board, to take up this matter. That's what the Community Development Director and I do.
Right.
That's... We, you know, again, but my job is to facilitate. When one say, "Are things being facilitated, coordinated?", that's what I do. Yes, there was a meeting in my office where I sat with the Health Director, Town Council, the Planner, myself. And the idea was, how do we move this matter forward to get a resolution in the community? That's our job. And yes, I do provide draft articles.
Mr. Manager...
So, I just don't understand what's going on here. But I'm not recommending policy to the Town of Chelmsford.
Mr. Manager, we understand that.
I responded to the Planning Board...
Well, no, 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 no. Now, hold on, sir. There's not a question before you.
If I may, Mr. Moderator, my question is really, I guess we can't find out how the Health Department feels about this article?
It's not relevant as to how the Health Department feels. It's relevant as to how you feel.
I understand that, but I won't be calling anybody but the Health Department with a complaint.
Depends on how you vote.
All right, thank you.
Nancy Arroway, Precinct 1. Start the clock. So, this... Small animals have been in the zoning for a long time. They've never been enforced there. They've never been enforced there because there's no method to enforce them there. Most small animal housing is much smaller than the size of a building that requires a building permit. And that is the only enforcing that you have for zoning. So, if you put it there, it's kind of useless. That's why we want to take it out. So, what's this all about? Well, first off, it's not about rats. Chickens don't cause rats. But there's a lot of things that do promote the establishment of a culture of propagation of rats, the breeding of rats, available food, available water, and available housing, if you will. If we were writing a bylaw to control rats, we would be controlling all foodstuffs. We would be controlling all the water sources in our neighborhoods. So, yes, we would have regulations about the control of animal feeds, whether it's your chicken and rabbit feeds, your dog food, your outdoor cat food, your bird feeders. We would have regulations about the control of food from gardens. You'd have to get rid of those, because the rats eat vegetables. And get rid of your fruit trees and your nut trees, and all of your shrubs that bear fruit. You'd have to get rid of the mulch in your flower beds, because they're bedding for rats. They provide housing. This just isn't a rat control regulation. And it's not about manure, either. I don't know where the number came from that was quoted here, but you guys know I do a lot of research, and I came up with multiple agricultural, state agricultural board websites that puts chicken production of manure in the category of about 10 hens per one 40- to 50-pound dog. So, if you've got a 100-pound dog that defecates in your yard, you're producing more poop than 20 chickens. So, we have regulations that control dog waste, but only off your property. So, we're not... We don't have regulations that say you have to clean up after your dog every time you take him out the front door. But we have a proposal on the books to do exactly that for chickens. This isn't about noise. Even those roosters are about the same noise level as a dog barking. Are regulations on dogs barking are a nuisance if they're barking continuously for 30 minutes? Ever hear a rooster crow continuously? Uh-uh.
Is that a question you're posing to me, Ms. Arroway?
It certainly is not, thank you.
It was a rhetorical question.
But you can stop my clock for that question.
I have heard several roosters in my past life.
It's also not about disease. Humans have a lot more diseases in common with the pets that we share our house with and our beds with than they do with birds.
You have one minute.
I understand, thank you. Your garden soil, if you raise flowers or raise vegetables, has a lot more potential bugs in it, germs, viruses, than your chicken poop. So, what's it about? This is an article that's being put forward to town meeting to address a long-running neighborhood feud. As a citizen, I don't want to be a part of it. As a town board member, I don't want to be a part of it. I just find the whole idea offensive.
Thank you.
Carol Kelly Sleski, Precinct 5. Could you tell us what the status of the rat population is now?
The Board of Health has taken some action against a property on Buckman Drive, and the Board of Health has taken some action against a property on Pine Hill Avenue. Both of these streets border Golden Cove Stream. The Board of Health did not share with me, or anyone that I know, what specific actions they took. Perhaps that question would be better directed toward Sue Rosa from the Board of Health. Sue, would you like to come up and answer?
Whoa, 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 whoa.
No, 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 no.
Mr. Moderator?
Just answer the question that's asked, okay?
I understand, thank you.
I guess we received quite a bit of email from people within the community. And one of the things that keeps coming forward is that there was inspection done, and there's a discussion, which I wouldn't know this terminology except for this communication, termination of rat burrows. And the suggestion here is that there were no... There was no proof of rat burrows in terms of the... of the, the population, the people who had chickens. There didn't seem to be, according to what has been sent to us, there didn't seem to be a correlation between the chickens and the rat burrows.
To answer your question, if someone is keeping chickens illegally, they're not going to admit to having rats.
Mr. Myers, Mr. Myers.
Yes, sir.
That was not a question. That was a statement.
So...
Are you asking a question?
Well, I need information, so I guess I should put it as a question.
Yes, please.
How can we, how can we interpret these two pieces of information? Yes, there's a rat problem, but there's no rat burrows, no rat evidence where the chicken coops are. How can, how can we resolve these two things?
The chickens provide the feed for the rats. Rats don't have to live in someone's yard. They can live near the water where they normally live and burrow. They can come to the coop to feed.
Okay. I actually thought that was more of a rhetorical question.
It, it isn't because we need information in terms of...
Right, but, but you process information every day. We, we all do. So, you know, the people who voted you in anticipate that you're going to use your best judgment to do what's right. That's all I can tell you.
Well, I'm having difficulty reconciling all of this.
I'm sure you're not alone.
Thank you for your questions.
Ed Buckley, 27 Buckman Drive. I got a question for Mr. Myers. Do many of our surrounding cities and towns coexist with Planning Board bylaw regulations and Board of Health regulations?
Yes, that's true. Every surrounding community that I researched has a Building Department with regulations and a Health Department with regulations. It's very common. We would be the only town that wouldn't have that.
Right. I find that strange. And the other thing is, I find it as a safety net for any resident in this town.
Now, is that a question, sir, or are you arguing?
Well, no, no, I, it...
I just want to make sure I know what you're doing because it doesn't sound like a question yet.
Well, my question is if, if the surrounding towns can coexist between the Planning Board and zoning bylaws and the Board of Health regulations, there's no reason why this town cannot abide by the same. I've had problems. I've talked to people and some of these boards don't want to get together and speak. And I think it's wrong for the residents and it's irresponsible. But that's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, through you, questions for the, potentially for the Board of Health. I'm curious to know if there's any estimates with regards to how many permits for chickens have been issued to residents on lots less than half an acre.
Could you kindly state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Eric Salerno, Precinct Three.
Thank you. I believe the number was 11 houses. Well, okay, hold on, hold on. Re-ask your question. I thought you were not going to let the Board of Health speak. No, 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 no.
Again, who speaks? Like when I said that I don't have voices in the administration to follow your opinion on that. Sue Rosa is here, prepared to speak to the matter on behalf of the Board of Health.
Right.
Sue, Sue, could you please come to the microphone and answer on behalf of the Board of Health?
Factual question.
On behalf of the Board of Health.
Again...
I understand that the information, you know, she can...
The reason that Sue's doing this is that the Board of Health Chair and other members are not in attendance this evening.
Understood.
So Sue is speaking on behalf of the Board of Health.
Great.
She's an employee of the Board of Health. She does not work for me.
That's fine.
Okay.
She's right next to you.
Sue Rosa, Health Director, on behalf of the Board of Health members.
Okay, so restate your question and let's hear the answer.
I'm trying to determine if we have an estimate as to how many residents have been issued a permit on less than half an acre. I understand your permits. I understand you might not be asking applicants for what size their lot is. If you don't have that information, we won't be able to use it to make our decision tonight, but I wanted to see if that information was available.
So I don't know the exact number under a half an acre. I can tell you the exact number that was issued in 2018 for under 40,000 square feet was 11 out of approximately 46. Currently, for 2019, any application that is coming through, we are currently going by the current zoning bylaw of 40,000 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My question for the, through the moderator, the person that's proposing Article Two, if they consider a quarter acre an adequate space to house any small animals, specifically chickens?
According to Article Two, if you were not near water, you could fit animals on a quarter acre lot. If you were located up against surface water, you would not be able to keep small animals with that size lot, if you were near water only.
Okay, you can start the clock. So based on my back of napkin, back of the sheet, calculations on a quarter of an acre, you have approximately 104 linear feet, if it's a square parcel, gives you, if you subtract even 50 feet from each side, it only leaves you with a four by four and eight by eight space. So I don't think that Article Two is going to allow any quarter acre lots to house any small animals. If you are passing Article One with a 25-foot setback, although there are other regulations within the health codes that we were reviewing previously, I don't have all those details, but it's more than just a 25-foot setback. There's specific ones from the rear lot and 25 feet from the sides. It could give you up to close to 3,000 square feet of an area to house small animals. And I think that's one of the reasons why the Planning Board, I don't want to speak for their reasoning for their wording, but my reasoning for supporting Article One is for that very reason. 25 feet seems to make sense because a quarter of an acre seems like more than enough space within a neighborhood to house certain small animals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Arroway, Precinct One, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. In your presentation, you noted that some people find the idea of a chicken coop, the sight of a chicken coop offensive. Does that go for you as well?
Um, no, 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 no. I'm not going to allow that, okay?
It was his presentation, sir.
No, I understand what his presentation was, but this isn't about him. This is about the, the issue that's before you, and I'm just not going to allow it. So if you have another question, but if you're going to argue again, you are limited to arguing against facts that have been introduced by other people who you wish to correct.
Well, I would like to correct the whole idea of conforming lots and non-conforming lots, since you give me the opportunity to. As a Planning Board member, we, we look at those things. What we find from the Assessor's Database data is that only about 27% of the properties in town have conforming lot sizes. That would exclude the other, I don't know, 73% from ever considering having small animals on their properties. But that's just the start of it because that assumes that it's a square lot, and we all know that they aren't. So when, even when you take a 40,000-plus square foot lot that is of conforming size, you find that those setbacks just don't work because you end up with not 100 by 100 square feet in the middle, but constricted at the sides or constricted front to back so that there is no area whatsoever on most of those lots.
Yeah, Ms. Arroway, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
I am rebutting it, sir.
No, that was brought up before you spoke the first time and you didn't address it then. I'm not going to let you address it now. I now understand what you're trying to say, but you should have said it during your first five minutes. So I appreciate it and let's move on to the next speaker.
So...
No, thank you very much, Ms. Arroway.
So what I'm saying is we decide...
No, 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 Ms. Arroway.
Use their own property.
Ms. Arroway, thank you.
I have a few questions and one of my...
Please, Ms. Derry, identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Debbie Derry, Precinct Six. I would like to know, either Article or the Board of Health, if it's, was today the way it is, how often would the property be inspected? Would it be once a year, twice a year? Would it be when it was permitted? Or would it be a continuous inspection throughout the year?
Yeah, here comes, here comes Ms. Rosa.
Sue Rosa, Health Director. The answer to that question is we inspect the property when we, prior to issuing the permit. So people submit their application to us with all their supporting documents. We send an inspector out to make sure that they are abiding by the current regulation. We issue them a permit. We will not go out there again until they go to renew their permit for the following year unless we have a complaint. If we have a complaint, we follow up on all complaints.
Thank you.
And my other question is this, if they have a complaint...
Hold on, Sue.
I tried, I did go to see you the other day, you know, Friday. If, if you have a complaint, what is a reasonable amount of town time that the Board of Health, well, that, that the person that would complain would expect the Board of Health or someone from the town to go and inspect the property? And if it would come to the point, as what I have learned from...
Well, let, let her answer the first question, which is, what would your response time be?
Basically, we, we would try to go out and follow up on a complaint within a week. And I will, to be quite frank and open at this meeting, so everybody is well aware, if I have five complaints that are all related to potentially restaurants and foodborne illness, those are going to take precedence over a chicken complaint.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I will say, I, I'll make one point.
Okay, so you're engaged in discussion now?
I guess, I...
Well, I don't know, you only do, so...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I really would like to say, no matter what happens, that our property, where our lots are so small, that primarily these coops are kept in the backyard. I don't want to have the coop on either side of my house in 25 feet. In my neighborhood, we only have about 10 feet from the lot lines, so it would have to be in the backyard. But granted, they do have an odor, even if they're cleaned daily. And I guess my other question is, how would the person or the, the abutter know until there was an investigation of rats on their property? Because the person, most homes have fences, how would you know where to go to look, even though you would see them? Because to be honest with you, I never knew that rabbits, had rabbits in the ground. And I never knew this until the summer. I had a hare that had babies in the front yard and another rabbit in the backyard, and they both had babies and I kept looking, I'm saying, but, what, what are they doing? And we dug up the hole and they were rabbits and two different times.
Ms. Derry, as fascinating as that is, it's sort of off, off topic.
So what I want to know, how will I know if, if there's a fence, if that's where they're coming from? I guess that's the question. Because I really wouldn't know because I didn't even learn this until the summer.
So to clarify, are you asking me how you will know if there's rats in your neighborhood?
Yeah.
The only way you're going to know if there's rats in your neighborhood is if you see them.
And will they make tunnels?
Rats, if they're present and they're in numerous numbers, will make burrows often and you will be able to see them. And if you have rats, you'll know you have rats.
Well, I think, one other point that I will say is that I know someone who in the spring, who's a resident of this town, who saw some burying, is she tried to plant some, some flowers, seeds, and they started to come up. She said to me, Debbie, that they're gone. And she started to do her own investigation and it turns out she had a bird feeder close by her depth. And she found tunneling. And the tunneling was caused from rats and it was from her bird feeder. So I never knew this either. I learned this because she had to hire an exterminator. And he said to her, it's because of your bird feeder that she saw all this tunneling. So we've been learned, thank you.
Thank you.
Will Wagner, Precinct Eight. I have one question.
Okay, question, sir, or permission?
Yes, question specific to the Board of Health or Planning Board. I'm curious as to why either one of those boards is responsible for this, given that we have an agricultural commission, which it seems this naturally falls under.
Ms. Rosa?
No, I'm the Board of Ag.
Well, okay. Mr. Parlee, you're wearing two hats today.
Henry Parlee, Precinct Seven, Board of Agriculture. We have total different regulations about acreage. As far as I know, the town has only adopted the five acre per square, five acre lot so you can be considered a farm. We're way over the 40,000. It's a totally different regulation. I have had conversations with Board of Health and Planning Boards about questions they may have had, but Board of Ag has nothing to do with backyard lots. It's not in our...
So it's currently not in your charter?
It's not, it's not in our charter. It's not anything to do with five acres is where our limitation is.
Okay, thank you.
Ruth Monahan, Precinct Three, West Chemsford. And this is discussion. And a lot of people have questioned how much room chickens really need. I did a little research and consulted with some friends in Maine about chickens. Never thought I'd talk about them so much. Two to three chickens, if you need, you need, excuse me, two to three square feet per bird inside a coop. You need 10 square feet per bird in an outside run. So now, for chickens that are free range, the coop and run, you need four feet by four feet, which is 16 square feet. I think there are not too many places in Chemsford where you're going to be able to free range your chickens. You know, I mean, how are you going to stop them from wandering all over the place? So if you never free range a bird, you need 10 square feet per bird. Four chickens would need a six by seven foot coop run, which is about 42 square feet. So we're talking about a reasonable amount of space, not a huge lot. So even if you have a smaller lot and you've got a house, you've got a garage, you've got a swing set, the utility shed and a sandbox, and maybe even a small swimming pool, you would probably still have 42 square feet for chickens. And that's...
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Caitlin McCabe. I'm from Precinct Three. I just had a quick question for, we've heard from a lot of the residents that they've either given up their chickens or had their chickens removed. I'm just curious, should both these articles be voted down tonight? Do we have a sense of what the impact is to those residents? Are they waiting for something better and they're still just kind of in status quo until that time?
I, I believe the gentleman behind you who raised his hand briefly might, might be able to answer your question.
Hi there, Alexander Melville, Six Monmouth Street. I'm one of the owners who has under 40,000 square feet. I'm on a quarter acre. And the question was, how do I feel about Article One and Article Two? My answer is I support Article One and I do not support Article Two.
So, so how would, if, if both articles are defeated, how does that impact you? I believe that was your question.
Excuse me, my apologies. So the answer to that question is I have my own article that I proposed that I believe would go up on the April meeting, which is very similar to Article One. And then, let's say that one also fails, then I would be required to get a variance or a special permit through the Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, which would cost me about $100. And then if that is passed, then I have to get a public hearing with the Board of Health, which also costs me $100. And that... And that would be under the non-conforming pre-existing permit clause in the new Board of Health regulations, which in addition to Article 1 and Article 2 is a much lengthier requirement regarding setbacks, standing water, conservation, et cetera. Does that answer the question?
Thank you. Well, now, now you can speak for yourself.
Okay, great, well, here I am, Alexander Melville. So first, I had a question to the moderator or the town manager, I'm not sure. I just wanted to clarify that the Town Council, Board of Health, Planning Board, Town Manager, Board of Ag, had a meeting together and discussed how to move forward with this chicken issue. And what resulted from that meeting was the presentation of Article 1 and the new Board of Health regulations. Is that correct?
Mr. Manager?
At the holidays, there was a meeting in my office with the people you described, but not the Ag Board. Again, the Agriculture Board was not involved with this because this does not pertain to five acre farms or greater. But we had a meeting in my office with Town Council, the Health Director, myself, you know, zoning enforcement officer, building commissioner, and to try to coordinate this, how are we moving forward? And that's when we decided to ask the Board of Selectmen to call this town meeting, yes.
Thank you. And then, a question to the moderator, perhaps to the Board of Ag, if that's permitted?
Well, I think that we've already established that the Board of Agriculture really is, is not applicable to what we're, we're dealing with today.
I would just like to confirm that they gave input on the Board of Health regulations?
Uh, no, 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 no. It really, you're talking about the difference between five acres and a quarter acre.
Sure thing.
And, and so let's stay focused on what we're here for.
Okay, then you may start my timer, please. I'd like to give a, a short discussion. So first, I'd like to address the previous speaker. It seems to me that collaborative action was taken between all the aforementioned groups, with the exception of the presenter of Article 2. So I think there has been a lot of town discussion on how to resolve this matter. And therefore, I think, if that sways this previous speaker's opinion at all, to vote yes on Article 1. Let's see here. Now, to pick up, you already heard that I have a quarter acre. I am currently in the process of renewing my small animal permit for 2019. I want to start by saying that I, I think, we all agree that we want to enable the people of Chelmsford to be productive in small-scale land stewardship of all forms, whatever it is, vegetable gardening, landscaping, bird feeding, growing herbs, spices, flowers, et cetera, animal husbandry on a small, non-farm scale. It's a matter of town identity, Chelmsford and our roots, and a matter of pride. We can, and we do, raise some of our own food, that's admirable. It benefits the community in a myriad of ways. Education of ourselves and our children, neighborly goodwill, sense of community, involvement and activism in the direction of our town, like me being here tonight, I could go on. And Article 1 is a nod to this common understanding by making it clear that citizens can participate in these activities. Most plots, as we heard, are under an acre, but yet, most people should still be able to take ownership of their land and to use it. What Article 1 does is it revises an outdated and poorly worded and misinterpreted regulation. And it attends to clarify the intended meaning of the regulation. We need to vote yes on Article 1. We need to preserve the original spirit of the regulation, which was not to stop small animal husbandry, but to protect it from being bundled along with large-scale animal husbandry like the farms, or by being bullied by aggronized neighbors. What does it mean? It means rewriting the language unambiguously and making it clear that small animals are exempt from the same rules as for large animals. In case you have not read the regulation, we're seeking to amend, here's a brief relevant part. "In excess of two cattle, horses, sheep, hogs, goats, game birds, or similar livestock, but not chickens, shall be maintained accessory to a dwelling only on a lot having an area of not less than 40,000 square feet plus 15,000 square feet per large animal 25 pounds or heavier maturity in excess of one or per 10 smaller animals in excess of the first 10." Wow. I read that over 100 times and I still don't quite get it. It's confusing and I, I don't know what to say, but let me tell you how it has been interpreted up to now. According to the Health Director, Richard Day, when I first applied for a permit several years ago, the regulation, as it's worded, does not apply to people owning fewer than 10 small animals. In excess of the first 10, under 10 and you're fine. That's what I was told. Therefore, the town of Chelmsford, rightfully or incorrectly, has in practice been exempting this zoning regulation for the vast majority of the animal permits that have been issued. I believe that's the true and original intent of this clause. It's only a recent perversion of this regulation that has been interpreted to keep all small animals out of Chelmsford on properties under an acre. Again, that's why we have Article 1, to protect small animal ownership. And in a weird about face from its original intent, the current regulation is being used to keep people from having small animals. Article 1 now seeks to protect small animal owners by clarifying the original regulations and maintaining the values of Chelmsford that we still have today. Yes, we can grow our own food. Yes, we can raise chickens for eggs. But no, we can't start a confined animal farming operation in our backyard. I re-spoke to the matter of the Board of Health and their subject matter expertise in owning chickens. And I will tell you that I, as a current chicken owner, but maybe not in 2019, will be hard-pressed to comply with all of the new regulations that the Board of Health has made.
You have less than one minute.
Thank you, sir. I would say that, in many cases, since a handful of chickens is no larger than a sack of footballs, that it's a safe and undisturbing activity. And the default position of this town should not be to require a variation from the Zoning Board of Appeals to do that set activity. In fact, like many of you, I would also demand reasonable and just public safety regulations from the Board of Health, who are the subject matter experts in this matter. The zoning regulations don't need to do the same thing. It doesn't have the expertise. But the zoning regulations do need to keep from interfering with what the Board of Health considers a safe and productive private activity. That's why we need to clarify the current regulations-
10 seconds.
-to protect small animal owners by voting yes on Article 1. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Well timed. I noticed that the next four speakers are individuals who have spoken before. So if you want to ask questions, you can. Or if you want to dispute comments that were made after you initially spoke, you will be permitted time to, to rebut those statements.
Can I add something to what a previous speaker had spoke about? To make a little bit clearer what he was addressing?
Um, if, if that person didn't feel he made, or she made herself clear, I think that it would be up to that person and not to you.
I'd like to address Eric's, um, quick.
No, 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 Mr. Diggs, again.
Okay. All right, I just want to address the size, in terms of what size means, just as-
No, no, Mr. Diggs, Diggs, we, you had five minutes before and you could have addressed size at that time. We're not going to reopen that. You had an opportunity to speak and the people behind you all have had opportunity to speak. I made it very clear at the beginning of the meeting that I was going to insist that you could only discuss something that was said after you spoke that you disagree with.
All right, well, I disagree with something that Eric discussed.
Specifically what?
Size, what, what the, what the rules infer as size. That's what I would like-
I'll, I'll give you a minute, go ahead.
All right, thank you. The current, the current Board of, Planning Board limitations are 40,000 square feet. When the new rules were proposed, I tried to find out what does that mean in terms of 40,000 square feet? How many lots in Chelmsford are 40,000 square feet? And what I was told, and Frank Green is here and he could probably verify it, that that means that 80% of the lots in Chelmsford cannot have chickens. Now, you can verify that if you want with him.
Actually, he said 27% are above 40,000 square feet, so 73 would not be, would be under that.
All right, and when the new rules were proposed by the Board of Health, I asked Town Council to evaluate, or if he didn't have the capacity, to find someone who has the capacity, to identify, if you went with the new Board of Health rules, what size lot would someone have to have to meet those new rules? And he-
Okay, sir, why didn't you ask that the first time you were up?
Well, there was a lot to say, because I'm trying to enlighten-
No, 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 sir, sir, I gave you more questions than anybody else in the room.
I, well, maybe I'm enlightened.
No, I did. Okay? So I, I think, I think we will move on.
Well, you need 20,000 square feet under the new rules.
Mr. Diggs, thank you.
Joyce Iros, Precinct 3, I move the question.
We have a motion to move the question. So we're going to address the first article first and then we will, we will move on the second article. So first of all, we have to verify that we have a quorum. So please get your, get your, your, what? I want to, I want to establish there's a quorum first and then we'll quickly vote.
That being necessary because for those-
So this is merely to establish a quorum, you're not voting on any article. So you can be as contrary as you want.
Voting system was not operating and had to be debugged. So we're now going to check to make sure that everyone's clicker clicks. Obviously, a lot of debate here.
Or not.
More than-
There we go.
More than one time-
Okay.
...it was pointed out that this is not a, a referendum on what happened on Buckman Drive last summer, nor is it a referendum on rats. It really is about chickens and the existing bylaw, zoning bylaw, that establishes the minimum lot size that you need in order to have those chickens. Should be pointed out, I don't think it was that, that the Board of Health regulations-
Are people having problems with their clickers?
Their names aren't on it.
Not sure what's going on.
I see your name.
No, it's alphabetical by first name rather than-
It's, it's alphabetical by first name, not last name.
Okay, some confusion on the part of the new town meeting reps.
So if you know what your first name is, look for that one first. Okay, so, so we do have a quorum. So now, look for your first name to make sure that you vote. And we're going to be voting on Article 1. A, a yes vote is to, to support Article 1.
No, let's move the question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we have to move the question first. So the first vote will be to move the question. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Clancy. So a yes vote will be to terminate debate and allow us to deal with the issues.
Interesting that the motion says move the question at 9:07 PM. It's like a line in the sand that is being drawn on how long we have been debating this particular issue, which is now approximately an hour and a half. For these two combined, two combined warrant articles, by far not a record. And, and at the very least, they have been entertaining. Obviously, everyone wants to move on to actually voting. This move, the question, is just procedural. It means the debate will stop and we will now vote on the two articles.
Okay, so the article passes 118 in favor and five opposed, no abstentions. So now we're going to vote on Article 1. An affirmative vote is to approve the zoning bylaw change.
Mr. Moderator, two-thirds vote?
Yes, it does require a two-thirds vote. Everything tonight requires a two-thirds vote.
And so here we go. This is the, a change of the zoning bylaw to remove the section that had to do with small fowl and, and animals. And those regulations will now be under the purview of the Board of Health. It looks like it's going to take a pretty substantial yes vote. Again, we're looking for two-thirds, which, given that there's only about 115 town meeting reps voting, that means we'll need about 75 in favor. Looks like we have 90. And it looks like Article 1 will pass. And as has been pointed out by Town Council, because Article 1 is passing, Article 2 becomes-
The article passes, 92 in favor, 30 opposed, no abstentions. But now, for the record, we have to vote on Article 2. And again, this would require a two-thirds vote to pass and create more chaos than we need. And that's just the way it is.
And so we're looking for roughly 40 votes against, which would be enough to scuttle this. It looks like it's going to easily be the case. Again, Article 2 was a, to paraphrase, to make it more restrictive in terms of setbacks than Article 1. The, the catch here is that because the setbacks will now be the purview of the Board of Health, they can change those much more easily than town meeting can, which requires a two-thirds vote to change any zoning bylaw.
Article 2 fails, 106 opposed, 18 in favor. We will now move on to Article 3.
Could go very quickly. We might be out of here by a quarter to 10.
Okay, please, please, uh, please, Town Manager is going to be speaking on Article 3.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 3 is a request for an appropriation of $108,531 from the General Stabilization Fund to fund, to fund an employee collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Chelmsford and the Chelmsford Superior Officers, Local 20, which basically consists of the seven police sergeants in the community. Those of you who've been, are town meeting the last year or so, you may recall we have in a current bargaining period of contracts between July 1st, 2016, and June 30th, 2019, which basically ends five months from now. You may recall last Spring Town Meeting in 2018, we brought forth a collective bargaining agreement for the firefighters' union. Then at the Fall Town Meeting a few months ago, we brought forth the collective bargaining agreement for the police patrol officers' union. And then the final outstanding agreement is before you this evening, and this is for the police superior officers, which, as I mentioned earlier, are the seven police sergeants in the union. The, the matter of this subject came from a arbitration award through the Massachusetts Joint Labor Management Council. And just to summarize what we explained at the previous town meetings, under Massachusetts' general laws, employee groups have the right to unionize in the Commonwealth for municipal employees. And you see many of those come before you at this town meeting for clerical employees, public safety dispatchers, highway, cemetery, and so forth. However, under Mass laws, the, the public safety units, which are basically a police and firefighters, have an additional provision, which is known as the Joint Labor Management Committee, which basically allows that if the parties have reached impasse, they send the dispute to the State Board, which assigns a independent arbitrator, which is, which is basically done through a selection process of the union and, and management representatives, selecting from a panel, they knock out candidates and then, and neutral gets chosen. And then you're left with then a three-person panel, the neutral that's chosen, a management rep, and a employee rep, who then become the three-person panel, who, who then hears the arbitration case. And this matter, again, like the, the previous patrol contract and the firefighters' contract, this went through the full arbit, mediation and arbitration process. Basically, arguments are presented to the three-person panel, and then following the arguments that were done in October, by December were the written subsequent submittals. And then, basically, we've just received the award and that's what we're bringing to you this evening. And so what the arbitrator and the panel does together is they review the previous awards, pattern of settlement, they, they look at the previous awards through the organization, in this case, the Chelmsford Police Patrol and the firefighters. They also compare to other communities and comparable jobs and so forth. And in summary, they came down with this decision, which is pretty compact and concise. And so the, the award consists of the following wage increases. On July 1st, 2016, which, for that fiscal year, that's known as fiscal year 17, there was a 2% salary adjustment in the hourly wage rate, which right now is 35, 45. And then, the second year of that agreement, which again ran from July 1st, 2017, to June 30th, 2018, or fiscal year 2018, there was another 2% added to that. And then for the current fiscal year, which began last July 1 and runs through this June 30th, the arbitrator basically gave a, a segmented award where 2% was awarded on July 1st, you know, seven months ago. And then, on top of that, another one and a half percent is awarded on January 1st, 2019. And then the last day of the contract, the wage increase would increase by another one and a half percent on June 30th. And then, if, then where you go from there, you're now then into a new bargaining period and going forward. So that is the award. The only other monetary component of the, of the award was that firearms training would no longer be paid as overtime, but would be granted- no longer be paid as overtime, but would be granted as compensatory time at a rate of 1.5 times the hours that it worked. So that is the concise award. There were other matters that were brought forth by the parties that the arbitrator did not include in the award, basically did not award those decisions. And so, basically, that then comes to the town, to you, for funding under this article. This is retroactive, obviously back prior fiscal years, and the fact that we're standing here in January, sorry, February now, where the tax rate has been set, and the way to fund this now is to fund it from our General Stabilization Fund that requires a two-thirds vote. And then what would happen is a favorable action is, takes place this evening, the next payroll, the town accountant would then issue the payments for the retroactive payments, and then we would then pay them forward, going forward at the new rate at this point in time. The final piece of this process is, is under the provisions of, of state law, Chapter 150E, Section 7B. The Town Manager and the Board of Selectmen is the executive authority of the town. We are, are, we are mandated to present this award to you favorably to the community in order to bargain in good faith. So that is our presentation this evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends against approval of Article Three.
Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen endorse Article Three. Three voted affirmative, one recludes themselves.
Okay. Mr. Latina, you're on.
I'm Latina, Precinct Four. Mr. Moderator, it occurs to me that it took almost four years to get this contract, and it's mostly retroactive. We're, Town Meeting's approving a four-month contract that we're-
Are you, are you a discussion now?
I'm asking the question, Mr. Moderator. So Town Meeting is approving essentially the next four months, rather than a contract into the future. Why would that be? And is that, shouldn't we-
Okay, you've, you've asked a question, so-
Through you, Mr. Moderator, that's not unusual in these instances. It, basically, what happens is, is that the state Joint Labor Management Committee requires that the parties take significant time to bargain in good faith. And then if they, if they then will do an investigation to determine, and send out a mediator to determine if they are at impasse, and go through a mediation process. Once that cycle is completed, they then go back and receive a petition to whether they have jurisdiction and to assign an arbitrator, and then it moves forward. So yes, the, this three-year agreement, basically two and a half years plus, is, is retroactive. The remaining five months are here before you this evening. And quite frankly, if this is ratified, we would expect to begin bargaining with this unit as, right away. So you're correct. We will, we will be bargaining. I, I, given the history of what we've happened here, I doubt we'll be back here in April. It seems to be too soon. But we could be here in October or at some future date for the period that would begin this July 1st going forward.
So we wouldn't, we wouldn't create a contract for the next four years? We'd wait four years to create a contract backward in time?
No, no, no. The, the parties agreed to this contract period. You are correct. We, the parties could have agreed, three years retro, three years forward, have a six-year deal. That was, the parties chose not to do that. The parties limited the, the focus of the arbitration and the mediation to the three-year period from July 1, 16, to June 30, 19.
Okay, so it's difficult to anticipate what we are going to pay our officers going forward. Second, second question. It occurs to me, if any of these officers have left the service of Chelmsford, do you pay folks that have left retroactively back to 2016?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George Ives, Precinct Three. Mr. Moderator, through you to the Finance Committee, care to explain?
Certainly. It's going to be lengthy.
So should I sit down?
You might want to. At a vote this evening, before this town, special town meeting, the Finance Committee met members at this table, we were introduced to this arbitration award, which came down this afternoon. It is a 24-page award with a dissent. It was not a unanimous decision by the arbitration board. It was a two-to-one vote. And there was a dissent written in the dissenting opinion. It's, has to do with the award and the valuation of it. And the dissenting opinion believes that there's error in the valuation as it's been calculated, and we agree. Our concern with the calculation that's been made is that this is a 9% award, where this 1.5, 1.5 are stacked at the end of the term, creating an inequity between the other bargaining contracts. And although this is a small bargaining unit, this will be addressed by further bargaining units going forward, because now, they are not in step with the other unions, they are actually ahead of the other unions in their bargaining position. And with that, I'm going to read the dissenting opinion.
I have copies of it.
Yeah.
You guys want copies of it?
This dissenting opinion is from Andrew Flannikin. "I cannot join the ward because it's based on a fundamental error in valuation. During the panel's extensive deliberations, the majority reasoned that it was appropriate to increase the base wages by a total of 9% over the duration of the contract. The 2% base wage increases on July 1st, 2017, 18, and 19 were entirely consistent with the town's established pattern of base wage increases. I support these increases. The majority, however, reasoned that it was also appropriate to award the bargaining unit of sergeants an additional 3%, split as 1.5% base wage increases on January 1st and June 30th, 2019. Because the panel in the recent firefighters' case awarded a 1% increase in the EMT stipend, retroactive the first day of the contract. The majority found that the 1% EMT stipend increase, perens, which applies to the entire bargaining unit, close perens, is equivalent to an additional 3% increase to the base wage, because the 1% EMT stipend was paid for three years. The additional 3% increases, the majority reasoned, will be implemented in the third year of the contract, giving them a lesser value. I cannot support these additional increases. The following illustrates the flaw in the majority's valuation. A $100 increase on the first day of the contract costs an employer $100 every year thereafter. A $300 increase regardless of when it is implemented costs $300 per year, every year thereafter, except in the first two years of the contract. So, while the cost may be the same over the limited duration of the three-year contract, the value of time is not. If the majority was truly seeking to issue an award comparable to the firefighters' award, it should have awarded the 2% per year base wage pattern increase with an additional 1% base wage increase in the first year of the agreement. Further, although the patrol officer's award did not follow the pattern, explicitly stated the intent was to approximate the values of the firefighters' award. I therefore would have supported a 7% total award, as it would have been equal in the value to the firefighters' award. Perens, I also object to the failure to award the town's light duty proposal, as its light duty proposal was awarded in both the firefighters' and patrol officer's cases, close perens. Ultimately, I cannot sign on to the award of a 9% base wage increase, because it is based on a flawed valuation of the firefighters' award, and is not supported by the evidence. Moreover, the award unfairly sets up the town for ongoing battles with its fire and patrol officer unions, which undoubtedly will seek to obtain the increases awarded here, arguing that the sergeants received a more generous award. For the reasons, I decline to join in the award."
Does that answer your question?
I'm still digesting. So, through you, Mr. Moderator, to the manager. If this is voted down, then what happens?
Mr. Moderator, I'm going to, if I may, I want to ask Michael McCall to come up and answer your question, not because I don't know the answer, but because, believe it or not, as part of Michael's time, he actually volunteers and does this work in, for other communities, as part of the Joint Labor Management Committee. So he has firsthand experience, so I will ask him to answer this question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, the previous speaker. A pursuant to the JLMC statute, which is Chapter 589 of the Acts of 1987, the arbitrator's award must go to the legislative body of the community. If the legislative body of the community votes it down, it ceases to be binding on the community. And therefore, it is sent back to the respective parties to start the bargaining again.
So where do we come up with these percentages? Is it through the arbitration? And is that what the arbitrators came up with? Or is this something that the town came up with?
This is out of the arbitrator's award. So what happens in the process, if I may, Mr. Moderator, when communities reach an impasse, they reach out to the JLMC, which is a special organization. There's members of the management side, I sit as an alternate. There are members from the fire and the police. And they send out staff mediation first to the communities to try and facilitate an agreement. If that cannot reach an agreement at that stage, it goes to the JLMC, where they have panel-level mediation, where they send out representatives like myself to assist with staff. If that fails to reach an agreement, it goes to a full arbitration hearing, where essentially there's a three-member panel, somebody from management, and somebody from the respective fire or police, and a neutral arbitrator, and it's an administrative hearing. Both sides get to give information, testimony, evidence, and then the panel gets together and comes to a decision. So that, based on the evidence that the arbitrator heard in this case from both parties, came up with this solution to the contract agreement.
So is this unusual to have a dissenting opinion? Or are most arbitrations a unanimous opinion?
It can vary, because you have three people. You have the arbitrator, you have a management. Ideally, you want to have all people, parties in agreement on the arbitrator's award, but it's going to happen from time to time that not all three can agree.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Badri Upliupan, Precinct Five. Mr. Moderator, through you to the Town Manager and others. Could you give a sense of how much time and effort this negotiation process takes in person-hours or, and, and some approximate guidance in, you know, roughly how it's done through firefighters, or the cemetery department, or others, in terms of effort level?
Well, if you look right now, we will be starting this year's, the next round of contract negotiations are starting right now. I'm getting initial dates for all the collective bargaining units right now. This process started three years ago. And typically, what happens is, we will meet the town's representative, myself, the HR Director, and from time to time, the manager in past years. We'll sit down, we'll meet for a series of weeks. We, we start with an initial meeting, establish ground rules, and then we set up dates, so we'll come in, we'll talk about the various proposals, we'll go back and forth. That can take several months. And then if, as was indicated, an impasse happens, then you get involved with the JLMC. And then there can be scheduling, because you have to get, all parties come together at the table. Usually, we have labor council, they have labor council. You also have to work around the schedule of the JLMC or the arbitrators. So going through each phase of the JLMC process could take three to six months. So you can easily see how an impasse that happens in the first six months at the town level could take one, two, three years. But bear in mind that any, at any stage of the process, the parties could hammer out an agreement. But if they don't, and it goes through the full arbitration process, it could take a couple of years.
So estimate about 700 to 900 person-hours over the course of any one contract, depending on how many people get involved?
Well, it's part of my job, so-
It's a full-time job for you, then?
Well, no, but it, it's part of my duties as the Assistant Town Manager, is I handle the contract negotiations.
Okay, thanks.
Glenn Thornt, Precinct Five. I heard that the Finance Committee voted against this. Was it unanimous, or?
It was.
It was unanimous. Mr. Moderator, is it time where we can also express an opinion about this and then sit down?
Well, is your opinion going to take more than five minutes?
Uh, no.
Then it is.
I, I have a great deal of respect for the Finance Committee. I know most of the people, not all, on the Finance Committee, and I know they can do math very well. But when I saw this put up there, my first question was, we have a, obviously, a condition of compound interest. We all love compound interest. But if you look at how compound interest is calculated, there are, especially retroactively, as you accumulate the benefits of having these raises going back in time and forward in time, it's very easy to get out of sync among different groups in the town. So if I understood what was read, and I just read it myself, it's a little bit complicated, it, it seems like that we have become a little bit out of sync with other potential union groups in the town. I certainly don't begrudge either the firefighters, or the police, or anybody else an appropriate raise in the context of the finances of the town. But I, I am very much concerned that when you start jacking one union up against the other, you're going to build in competitions within the infrastructure of the town, which is probably not good. And I don't want the firefighters and the police department competing with each other out of sync to get particular well-deserved raises. So my concern was, basically, are we doing the right thing for town-wide arbitration? So I have no problem with sending this back for discussion. I cannot understand, because this is, even though it's complicated, it's fairly clear what the concerns are in this document. And if our good mathematicians on the Finance Committee said they too are concerned, well then I should be even more concerned, because there's more of them than me. So it, I don't see anything wrong with going back and having those other two arbitrators, it may have been asleep at the time, I don't know, take a look at the arguments made in this sheet to see if they find them invalid or valid. And if they find the arguments in this sheet invalid, please tell us why, so we can come back and pass this. But if they find them valid, they may come up with a different conclusion that matches better the other unions in the town, so we don't start competing with ourselves inside the town with schools and fire and everything else. So I would, I would recommend going back to the, to the arbitrators and, and not passing it this time, just so we can get clarity on the rationale and the math that I'm trying to explain in this sheet. And thank you for the Finance Committee for putting their heads together to say that you see it too.
Thank you.
Scott Davidson, Precinct Three. Question for the Finance Council. I see the, the panel, the dissenter offered a dissenting opinion. Did the majority offer a majority opinion on this?
There's a 23-page opinion that was issued this afternoon.
So to the previous speaker's point, that argument has already taken place among the
Effectively, it has, however.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm going up now.
Mr. Moderator, George Ives, Precinct Three. Could you finish that last statement after the however, please?
Certainly. Thank you.
Actually, you, you took, you, you moved ahead of Mr. Latina. So I'm going to give Mr. Latina an opportunity, and then, and then if, if he wants Mr. Clancy to respond, that's fine.
Will you yield the floor to me?
He's yielding? Okay, fine. Thank you.
Thank you. The arbitration decision that's been issued has, has been authored by the majority. It, it's authored by three individuals who had a discussion and came up with a conclusion. However, they do not agree on the math. We have responsibility as a, as a legislative body to ensure that when we accept a decision, that it does not irrevocably affect the town. When someone points out, as an arbitrator has in this instance, that there is a miscalculation in the award that's been given, that will lead to a weakened bargaining position for the rest of the town unions, we have, we have a responsibility to have that reevaluated and brought back to us, possibly as soon as Spring Town Meeting.
Mr. Moderator, to the, to the Assistant Town Manager, if, if we say no to this, and you, you mentioned that it goes back to an entire process, not only to do the math, but is it possible we might be able to establish a future contract, rather than, than doing this, this game with four years, retroactive, instead of allowing our, our senior officers to understand what their pay is going to be for the next two or three or four years?
As I indicated before, the statute says the parties would just go back to the bargaining table, so effectively, yes. We will, they'll be able to go back, and you already have an idea of what was on the table, which was rejected by, if, if, in that scenario, if it's not approved by the legislative body, the parties would then have some level of framework where they could start working from. And they also have the other awards that they could be looking at as well.
Okay, and Mr. Moderator, in your experience, is it possible, because they'll be working off a, a pretty close-known figure, that they might like to look forward at their pay raise and say, hey, let's do 1.5%, 2% for the next four years? In your experience, is that-
Well, I would not like to speculate on what, what could or could not, but the parties would have the ability to go back and revisit everything.
And one final follow-up. In your experience, is it possible that this $108,531 might go up if we vote no tonight?
Is that, you know, they could go through the whole process again and get a different arbitrator, a different award. But one would hope that when they get back to the table, they could resolve it. But again, it's all speculative.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, I'm, I'm uncomfortable voting yes on this, with our, with our Finance Committee having unanimous no vote, and frankly, with a 24-page document that they had to di- digest this afternoon. I'm a little uncomfortable having it, having an emergency town meeting or a special town meeting in the middle of winter when some of our colleagues aren't here. The chicken thing was, was enough for me, but the finance decision made on a 24-page document with a question of the figures, and again, we're, we're basically voting on a contract for the next four months instead of what I understood in the normal business world, a contractor is looking toward the future, not back four years. So I would love to have our professional negotiators go back with our, our union representatives and the negotiators, and please consider looking forward and not just backward, and come up with a figure that town meeting can vote on in the springtime. I'm assuming that we would certainly be paying our officers in addition to their pay percentages associated to the loss of that pay since 2016. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Sherman Horton, Precinct 6. Is this an all or nothing kind of thing, or can it be amended?
It's all or not.
It cannot be amended. It's, it's a package.
So you, for example, we could not vote just the first three years of the package? Okay. Is it, is it true that our, our Fine Police Sergeants Union has not had any paycheck increase since June, or yeah, June 2016?
Yes, that's correct. That's why they would be retroactive, and they would receive lump sum as soon as the settlement is achieved.
And to the moderator, is there a way we can table this until April town meeting?
Well, if, if, I'm not sure that there would be a benefit to do that, because if you table it, then, then there's no progress between now and April where if you vote one way or the other, at least you have an idea as to where you're, we're going.
It might allow town meeting representatives just to learn more or...
Well, you, again, you can, you can vote any way that you want to vote. I mean, if you entertain a motion to table, we will, we will, we will do that, but...
I don't intend to. Thank you.
Okay.
Claire Genot, Precinct 7. I'm here to discuss why I intend to vote against this, so I guess the clock, if that's what we're doing. I attended the Finance Committee meeting earlier tonight, and this is a tough thing to do for them, I would imagine. Well, actually, I'm pretty impressed because they made it very cut and dried, so they're pretty and unanimous in their decision. And it would be my request, I know there are a lot of very experienced reps in this room, and there are just also very, a lot of less experienced reps in this room. This is a hard, hard vote to take, and certainly there's no question that after however many years I've served in all the various roles I have, I support every one of the municipal workers in this community in theory. I support the police, the fire, the, the educators, and I would not want any of them to take this vote to mean that we do not support them. That's not what this is. This is clearly about the impact to the affordability of future budgets, and I didn't have time to read the 23 pages, but the FinCom was kind enough to provide it to me at 7:15, and so I've glanced at a few sections in here. And what I think is instructive for people in this room to know is that reading this would be very instructive for all of us, because it affects not just how this is decided, but why it's decided sometimes. And a lot of it has to do with the amount that the unions see in our stabilization funds, which we vote for particular purposes. And I think everybody who's interested in understanding this would know a lot more about what goes into it if they saw the 23-page opinion as well. It's too quick to make, you can't negotiate this here, it's not our job to negotiate this here, but certainly we can make a decision on whether it should go back for more consideration or not tonight, and that's why I'm going to support it. I've never seen the Finance Committee in all these years say that they recommend against a, a ward. It's not done lightly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moderator, through you to the town manager. Just two quick questions. What, you know, when we went through this with the fire department, you know, there was a dollar amount assigned as far as what the reward was. What's the dollar amount we're talking here? And then the second one is, what would the cost be to the town if we send it back as far as more legal fees and things like that?
Yeah, the dollar amount here is $108,531. When the, this estimate was prepared by the town accountant. I mean, obviously, we knew the award was coming, you know, we knew it was going to be retroactive. The town accountant was prepared, she, she knows who the seven people were, plus a couple who moved in and out. She also could just calculate what 1% would mean, and then when the actual number comes in, you just change the spreadsheet to the numbers that came in. So the, the, the information was calculated by the town accountant, Darlene Lucier. She obviously has the breakdown for the first year, the second year, and, and the third year of the award. And in the answer, the, the second part of the question in terms of where do we go from here, yes, it does take resources. As, as Michael said, I, with, with his background, I'm turning over the bargaining aspects to, to, to Michael to continue this and also other bargaining going forward. So obviously, what it imposed upon his time, it also does involve labor council. And yes, we do pay labor council, like the town council this year, this evening, who's our general counsel, so it's not the, the firm that Mr. Haverty is associated with, but we have a separate legal labor council. And yes, you pay them $200 an hour for their legal work in terms of working on matters for the town. So yes, it's not, it is costly to move forward, you know, as, as one would expect.
Claire Genot, Precinct 7. Question though, I'm all about cost-benefit analysis and $108,000 or $80,000, anything like that sounds like a small number in our budget. But I think the concern I heard from the Finance Committee tonight was not about the ability to pay the $108,000 or frankly, the cost of going back to the table. It was about the impact that this agreement will have on all the future negotiations coming up. And while this might be $108,000 for seven people, when you take a teachers' union or another much larger unit, these numbers expand dramatically and get compounded year after year after year.
Thank you. Okay. So we will now vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. A yes vote is to approve the taking of $108,530.61 from stabilization fund to, to satisfy this collective bargaining decision.
Kelly Biddy for Chelmsford Telemedia. It does not look like this is going to pass and will be sent back to the arbitrators, and maybe we'll see it again at, at spring town meeting. It's been a very instructive half hour. I, for one, have learned a lot about how this process works, sort of peel back some of the layers and the, and the curtains on these collective bargaining agreements.
The article fails. 26 in favor, 89 opposed, five abstentions. And now Article 4.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The final article for the special town meeting pertains to an easement off Tobin Avenue. Again, I'll give you a brief background. This article is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. It takes a two-thirds vote because you're granting an easement in land. History on this project is, this is a parcel of land that's located off of Tobin Avenue. It's behind St. John's Church parking lot, if, for me, with that, that area. Tobin Avenue obviously runs adjacent to St. John's parking lot. This is land that's behind there. The Archdiocese of Boston put the property out to bid. There were multiple bidders. The property was acquired by a property owner, which is the corporation that is developing this site, a limited liability corporation that's developing this site. They, last week, they obtained approval from the planning board for a eight-unit subdivision, which is basically four duplexes, as shown on the plan here. What's taking place is, is they need access to the property. And as was discussed at the planning board level, and again, in consultation with town council, there are basically two effective ways of accessing the property. One is through the easement that is being considered before you this evening, which would be off of Tobin Avenue, which is actually a parcel of the town, a town land that was acquired through tax possession. And in fact, there already is a encumbrance upon the land. You, you can see it on the slide, this East, East Valley Drive. You can see right up here, that is off of this parcel. And so when this property was developed back in the 80s, that was the access and frontage and so forth for that parcel. Again, the town subsequently acquires this parcel for tax possession, and now this other parcel is subdivided up by the church. It's sold. Now the applicant that now owns this parcel seeks to access the property through the town-owned parcel, which is why they come to the town Board of Selectmen for the easement. And obviously, in order to grant the easement under Mass General Law, is the select, we need a two-thirds vote of town meeting. The, the other means of access to property would be off of John Street, which is up here to the property. In fact, there'll be, the, the difference there in terms of why go through the easement process when there's another access, the difference is topography. There's a significant grade of topography. Many of you are familiar with that area of town, the big height on Highland Avenue. As you get down, there's the soccer field, and then you go down, you know, if, as you're heading towards the church and the funeral home. So obviously, you know, there's, it's, there's that topographic challenge, which would require the construction of, of an alternative debt road with retaining walls and so forth. So again, this was all vetted by the planning board. They issued the approval last meeting. And then the final piece of the discussion is the Board of Selectmen, in consideration for granting this easement across this parcel of land that's now held by the town, has, has agreed with the developer for a $50,000 payment to the town of Chelmsford, which would go into the treasury, and, and the expressed desire for that by the developer would be that that $50,000 be appropriated at a future town meeting for improvements at Varney Playground. So that's the presentation on the article, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Any questions? Oh, Finance Committee, do you have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 4.
Board of Selectmen, do you have a recommendation?
The Board of Selectmen unanimously vote to approve it.
Any discussion?
I have a discussion.
No, no, please identify yourself.
Peggy Simpson, 24 Tobin Ave. I have a discussion, and I'll have a couple of questions.
Ask your questions first, and then the clock won't run until you're done. If you ask your questions afterwards, you're on the five-minute clock.
When I came here tonight, I read that, according to the Finance Committee, the neighbors generally support the developers' plans. I live on Tobin Ave. I do not know one neighbor who supports this. No one asked what I wanted from the Finance Committee. We have gone to planning board meetings. We've sent letters to the planning board. People couldn't attend. These letters to the selectmen. I would like to know from the Finance Committee who, how did they get those neighbors' generally support?
When the person who owns the property who has requested the easement came before us, he stated that in discussions and before the planning board, that the, there was no opposition that he had from any of the neighbors other than a couple of discussions, and that it was supported by the board, and that the neighbors were not in, not, not in opposition to what was happening.
I, I can't believe that you take the developers' warrant. But there were, the first planning board meeting, there were like 10 neighbors. Several of us spoke. Not every single neighbor spoke, but no one came to us to ask. We don't approve. The other thing I wanted to ask was about, the developer intends to provide $30,000 for the Varney Park. Now, there, the developer is also paying $50,000. Are those two separate payments?
At the time that he presented to us, it was a $30,000 figure. However, in speaking with, we are constrained to providing our recommendations one week prior to town meeting. This is a very short schedule for us. It came before us. We posted. The people that attended spoke. We were informed by the presenter that there was a $30,000 offer as a, as compensation and consideration for the property. However, when he went before the Board of Selectmen after we had already produced our book and our recommendation, the number had been risen, risen to $50,000.
May I have a discussion now?
You certainly may.
I would simply ask the town meeting to vote no on this warrant. It's a dead-end street. There are a lot of children who play on that street. We're going to have eight houses, people moving in, probably two cars per house, a lot of extra cars, probably a lot of extra kids. They can, the developer can do the easement. They can come in through John Street or Pearlie Street. Yes, it's more expensive to the developer, but he bought landlocked land. So I would just like to ask the town meeting to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Brian Strip, 90 High Street, also a member of the Chelmsford Historical Commission. The previous speaker talked about the access to, from Pearlie. Was that even discussed? I know they talked about John Street. For you, Mr. Moderator, through to...
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Manager.
There's a question about access to Pearlie.
Mr. Moderator, I would ask Mike Raizebeck, the Chair of the Planning Board, who, who handles subdivision approvals, to answer the question, because he's certainly more expert in land use development than, than I am.
Yep, Mike Raizebeck, Planning Board Chair. Yes, we did discuss it. However, it turns out that street's not fully built out, and so it's not simply a matter of, you know, continuing it in. There was a lot more that would need to be done with that. Similarly, we looked at the other back access, and there is in fact a, a problem with the topography there. So we conditionally approve this based on the proponent getting some sort of access to the property. And that's what this article's about. Thank you.
Thank you. The rest is discussion, so you can start the clock. Thank you. I will admit I have a personal history with this property. My wife and I actually were the owners of 23 Tobin, which are the first condo, condex as you take on Lost Valley Drive. We were there for almost four years, and that three-acre lot was basically a butt in our backyard. So I understand the Archdiocese is wanting to sell the land, and it was bought for $310,000, and with the assumption apparently that there was a way to develop it. The planning board has weighed in, and it needed a, an article for town meeting, and here we are. The developer did come up with six considerations, that he would make road improvements at the end of Tobin Ave across this property. Well, that's fine, but the easement, if it isn't granted, it doesn't matter. Things would stay as they are. He said he'll loop the water line from John Street to Tobin Ave, and he would be responsible for those costs, and he's estimating $25,000. Well, these water lines have been dead ends for 30-plus years, and again, if the easement isn't granted, nothing changes. The developer will have sewer line gravity fed to the town, which means it would eliminate eight grinder pumps. Well, again, if this doesn't get developed, it's a moot point, there won't be eight grinder pumps. And he'll have a gravity-fed line to giving the four people down on Lost Valley Drive access to sewer, and that's great, but my feeling is if the, if the town has issues with this, the, should be taken up with the owners, the four owners on Lost Valley Drive. And he said he will leave 25 feet of vegetation abutting the properties down Tobin Ave, and again, a nice gesture, but right now they have the entire three acres. The $50,000 has already been talked about. It can't be earmarked for Varney Park, so that would be a future discussion. Now, this is where, town meeting is where the town gets to represent the rest of the town as a group, a much larger group than a small board. Why should we look to put another four building? should we look to put another four-building, eight-unit project on undeveloped land? You might say it's only three and a half acres. Well, three acres here, five acres there, eight acres somewhere else. Where does it end? Well, we have nothing left but precious conservation land that we have managed to save. Why should we vote to allow yet another wooded space to be developed? Why should we cater to a developer when we really do not have to? He bought the land with the expectation to develop it, and that was a gamble, not a guarantee. Are the considerations offered really worth considering what the developer gets in the long run? If he really wants to help the town, let him donate the land as open space. I ask you to vote no on this article, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Glenn Thorne, Precinct Five. Just so I can get level set on this, there's a proposal to put in a development on this land. What are the specifics of that development? Are they individual homes? Are they condominiums? How many? Is there any information on that? Anybody?
The project just received approval from the planning board. I'll ask Mike Raizebeck to summarize what, what has been approved.
I'm not going to read those. You tell me what's in there.
I believe it's four duplexes.
Okay.
Is that sufficient?
How, how many bedrooms, one?
I don't have the details on the individuals, however.
So, so four duplexes would mean eight somethings?
There would be, we were told that the Selectmen's meeting, there'd be four duplexes, three-bedroom units. So basically, it's each unit of the duplex. Here's the developer right next to it.
Sure, yeah.
Good evening, everybody. My name's William Harvey. I am the developer. I had an opportunity to listen to the previous speakers, and I think one thing that should be clearly understood is that this land is developably land. I don't need the easement from Tobin Ave in order to make a development.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Harvey, there was a question addressed to you as to what, what the, the...
Yes, sir.
Is going to be built there. So if you can explain that?
Yes, sir.
Because this is actually Mr. Thorne's time.
Yes, sir. It's zoned RC. There'll be duplexes built there. There'll be four duplexes.
That answers my question. And so we've had a couple of numbers that have popped up here, and generally speaking, when you start talking about how much money is appropriate for what, if the town was selling property, they'd go...
Are you debating?
I am. Yes, I am. Start the clock. I'm glad it's not a 24-second clock, although I bet I could do it. The...
I bet you couldn't.
Someday, we'll try that. So, you know, if the town were to sell land, we would go out and try and figure out how much that land is worth, whether it was something that was going to get attached to somebody else's property or, or the like here. This is a little bit different, because it sounded like the property can be developed by coming down John Street Avenue, whatever is there, bringing a road down. But it is pretty steep over there, and I'm not sure of the top, topography. But that's going to be obviously a challenge if it's coming down the backside of the hill. So my question is, we've got a couple of numbers that were tossed around. We had a $30,000 number. We had a $50,000 number. You know, from, from what assessment did that value derive?
Mr. Mr. Diggs? No, you have to speak in the microphone. I'm sorry.
The town occasionally sells lots like this. The most recent one was sold outright for $57,000. In this case, we're only granting an easement, and it seemed that $50,000 was appropriate for land we would retain, but just give a right for an easement.
So that was a town council's input, or where'd that come from?
That was what was determined as what appeared to be fair compensation by the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
We didn't sell it. We just granted the easement. The last one that did sell, sold for $57,000.
So the Board of Selectmen had a conversation. They came up with a number of $50,000 and recommended it.
The developer offered 30. We counted with 50, and he agreed.
I was just wondering where the 50,000 came from. I'm still on the clock. I guess my concern would be for something where there's a money exchange like here, what it was based on. And so my question would be to, you know, the Board of Selectmen, maybe the Finance Committee, would it be appropriate, because I think it would, is to have some independent group take a look at the value of the easement for the construction of eight, eight somethings, four duplexes on that property, to assess what the real value would be. Now, if the real value comes in at $20,000, 50 sounds good. If the real value comes in above $50,000, and maybe it doesn't sound as good as it sounds right now, coming just from the Board of Selectmen's consideration. So, you know, I would recommend taking a look at a, an official assessment, which isn't that expensive, to see if there's a value here that we're not realizing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brian Latina, Precinct Four. I'm sure everyone at town meeting was able to drive on Tobin and John Street over the weekend like I did, because there's only four articles and only one zoning article. And as, as I'm sure all of you noted, Tobin is, is really rough, and you're running the clock. That's good. Tobin is rough. It's kind of disgraceful from perspective of if I lived on that street, I'd be, I'd have to drive really slow. And I'd recommend that if a sewer is run down that line to work into this property, or if you tore up the, that little acre, little corner lot that, that the town is talking about an easement through, it's already paved through to make that other cul-de-sac that you see up there. This is kind of misleading. The road actually goes down Tobin. It goes up into that first cul-de-sac, and all, all we're asking town meeting to do is put an easement so that that property can be accessed from a flat street that's kind of bumpy, and then build four to six, I guess?
Four.
Four buildings in that lot, much like town meeting did on Mill Road, except we rezoned that property. And more importantly, before we did the Mill Road, which is now called Ready Street, the town rezoned it and had a pre-discussion with the developer not to put duplexes in, even though he could. If we rezoned it and he put a development in there, the neighbors didn't like the idea of duplexes. So I'm suggesting that if we give this easement, the town puts $50,000 into our town coffers, and I got to tell you, there's already a paved road there. It's just a question of saying, yes, you can, you can build a little bit better road into this three-acre lot. Second point is there's a fire hydrant right at the corner there. I suspect that has to be moved, so the water system would be upgraded for the folks on Tobin. And, and I'm here to tell you, I don't want building in my backyard if somebody has a bunch of trees there. And I, I got up and had an article about Turnpike Road near my house, and there's 168 units going in, and they stripped mine nine acres. I don't like it. I didn't like it at the time, but the, the reality is Turnpike, 104 Turnpike doesn't belong to me. It belongs to someone else, as this property does. All we're asking town meeting to do is to permit an easement on an already paved road, to allow the developer not to have to go back to, to the planning board and come in on John Street. And there's a nice oak tree right at the end of John Street, and the neighbors park their cars in the middle of that street because it doesn't continue down that hill. I'm quite certain that he could get permission to go on a really poor street, a poor selection on John Street, and there's nothing town meeting would have to do to allow that. This is far better, a far better road to access it, and I'm going to bet that this developer would meet with those folks on Tobin Street and listen to them, and he might consider putting in four really nice single-family houses for a total of four, six cars, or eight cars, whatever it is. And I'd recommend that they not pave that road after they tear it up, because it slows traffic down. You don't want a paved road with yellow lines on it. This is Chelmsford. So let's, let's consider the easement for $50,000 and make that developer work with those folks that live on that street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Diggs, Precinct Two. First of all, speaking from the Board of Selectmen, we received no letters, no emails, no correspondence from anyone concerning this that was on Tobin Road. Although it was stated that we received letters, we did not. Secondly, concerning the small road that goes up to the property now, when this was originally done back before 2000, the planning board at that time gave special consideration to the developer who was developing it, and he was not required to build a full road. It is really a driveway to serve the residents of the Lost Valley, where there are two, where there is a duplex. And part of the work that would be performed by the developer is to build a street, Tobin Road, to the full specifications of what a street will be. So I agree with Mr. Latina that a proper road needs to be created there. He feels that the road is there, it is not. It's a driveway, and it needs to be a full road. So that is part of what's being done. Also, John Street is a very narrow street. If anyone has lived, been on it, it leads up to a ball field. Having heavy-duty construction on John Road on that street would be very difficult and a detriment to the people who live there. And coming in from Tobin would mean that it would be a much cleaner operation for the neighbors in general, as far as a community. And the fact that the town would be able to support that with the sewer system, that would mean that there would be eight less grinder pumps in the town, which the town has an obligation to maintain forever. And it would just seem to make sense that with all this, as part of the consideration, that that's why the Board of Selectmen went forward and recommended it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through you, the Moderator, Paul, the Town Manager, Ken LaFave, Board of Selectmen. Paul, just a quick question. What's the, the lot size of this piece of land?
It was just, it was just said earlier. We just cited earlier. It's...
Point?
Three. Oh, you mean this, oh, this, no, the lease said 0.26 acres.
Okay.
The parcel of land that the easement, it was 0.26 acres.
And there's, is there an easement already on it?
There is a covenant that the planning board, a previous planning board had issued when the, as was mentioned earlier, when the project was developed decades ago, there's a covenant that provides the access to Hidden Valley Drive. So yes, the land...
So it's an already encumbered?
Land is encumbered, and what town council explained to the, explained to the Board of Selectmen, because I was there for that discussion, and may have explained to the planning board, is that an easement can be granted as long as it does not conflict with the existing access to the residents of Hill, of Hidden Valley Drive.
What is the market value of this land to the town? Like, if you were to sell it, what would the value be?
I'm not an appraiser.
All right. Could you sell it?
The land could be sold. Yes, the, the town could sell this land. And again, they would, such a land would have to sell with the, with the encumbrance upon that to, you cannot remove the access to Hidden Valley Drive. So yes, the Board of Selectmen could, could procure a disposition of this parcel by a collective bidding, I'm sorry, a competitive bidding process, and remove itself from the ownership of this parcel. Yes.
All right.
The market would determine what that price would be, obviously.
Right. Thanks. So you can start the clock. So, you know, I'm sort of up here defending the Board of Selectmen, because, you know, you vote us in to kind of weigh this stuff out, and when someone stands at the mic and sort of leads us to believe that we sort of just threw a dart at a dartboard, it was, a lot more went into that. So we looked at the piece of land. We said it was a quarter of an acre. What's an unbuildable acre lot go for in town, which Glenn had said was just over 50,000? It's already encumbered land, and then, of course, we weighed out the offer that was made by the developer for the water line, which, believe it or not, it is important to loop a water line. A dead-ended water line has to be flushed, has to be maintained, has to be cleaned. A looped water line with the water constantly flowing doesn't, that doesn't have to be done. So that's a benefit to the North Chelmsford Water Department. Coming in John Street, like, which was pointed out, was going to incur eight grinder pumps to the town. The land was sold with a plan attached to it that would have to go in front of the planning board. So our fear was that without bringing it to town meeting, the developer would just go in right on John Street, bring it in front of the planning board, get it approved. We'd have no say in the matter. The water issue wouldn't be solved. The town would get strapped with eight grinder pumps, and we would have to make, you know, and there was no negotiation. When the developer brought this up in front of the Board of Selectmen, and we said, well, if they come in Tobin, now he has to come in front of town meeting. He has to negotiate with the Board of Selectmen, and we're now at the table with the developer, and we can work out some benefit here for the town. That's how we arrived at it. And furthermore, when we looked at the value, we said, well, what would the maximum value of this be? It's a quarter of an acre lot, and we know an unbuildable went for 50. So we said, well, we could spend, I don't know, five grand on an appraiser and send it out and waste our time, and in the meantime, and the developer could start developing off of John Street, and then we lose the option. Or we could, you know, read some appraisal guides and look what some other towns have done, and come to a ballpark figure. And so that's why we arrived at the 50,000 and went back to the developer with that. So that's a little bit of the background that went behind it. There was a lot of debate. There was a lot of discussion in executive session on how that all went, and, and it wasn't just a number that was thrown out there, picked out of the air. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Apparently, there's nobody else. So we will vote on Article Four. Again, this requires a two-thirds vote. A, an affirmative vote would be to grant the easement. Negative vote or an abstention would not advance that.
Let's be looking like it requires a two-thirds vote. Looks like we're going to have two-thirds approved.
The article passes, 92 in favor, 25 opposed, two abstentions. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you.
And thank you for joining us on this rather abbreviated town meeting forum. We had four articles. We got to all of them. Got to all of them within about a three-hour period, which, you know, these days, that's doing very, very well. The, the debate has shifted now in terms of the chickens. It moves away from a zoning by law to the Board of Health, which has already promulgated some, some restrictions that they approved back in December. Those will be carried forward. The people who want to have chickens on their less than 40,000 acre, 40,000-foot lots can now do so, subject to those provisions, setbacks, and so forth. The fire, the, the arbitration ruling for the seven police sergeants was sent back to the drawing board, and as you just saw, we concluded an easement that will allow for a small development up in North Chelmsford. All in all, a pretty tidy night's work. I want to thank you for joining us. I thank our staff and volunteers here at Chelmsford Telemedia for bringing this to you. We'll see you again for the regularly scheduled Spring Town Meeting, which I guarantee will take longer than three hours, beginning Monday night, April 29th. We'll see you then. I'm Kelly Beatty. Have a good night.